Okay, good evening. It is 6:03 PM. I am going to call this meeting into session. My apologies for the late start. We're just have some tech stuff working out. Our clerk is out right now and trying to get her connected via Zoom to catch as much of the meeting as we can. So that being said, let's start with the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. And now a moment of silence as we consider those who have gone before us. Thank you. Okay, as I said before, we're down our village clerk who's normally here, so I'm going to be kind of running the meeting. So a quick roll call before we go on. Trustee O'Malley. Trustee Alter. Trustee Shuddig. Trustee Decker. Deputy Mayor Ryan. I am here. Missing is trustee Walried and also present is our village attorney, Elena Finn. All right. First off, I wanted to start off with some discussion. As we have been going through transition for our police department, one of the things we've been looking at is staffing. When I started as mayor in 2017, the board had worked to getting more coverage from night to night with the hope of going full coverage 24 hours. They had been adding overnights here and there every couple of years. I want to say around 2018, the village board created two full-time police positions apart from the role of the chief. We filled that with Officer Hudson, who is still here with us, and Officer Wagner, who has since moved on. In our discussions with where we're evolving to right now, we brought up the hope of bringing on two of our regular part-time officers who have been working a ton, especially over the past year of transition, and who have done, in my mind, exceedingly impressive, solid work in a time when the village was, department was understaffed and in transition, and they became rocks in their coverage and in our departments. So I brought this to the attention of the board, wanting to hire them on just full-time. And tonight, we have on the board agenda a resolution to create a new full-time police officer position. That would be the third full-time position. And the appointment of two full-time police officers for the village of Housick Falls Police Department. And that, of course, would be Officer Morgan Fisher and Officer John Warner. So if it's all right, I'd like to bring up the resolution on the screen. Bear with me for just one minute. And I'm getting Marie connected here, so just bear with me for one minute. Hey, Marie, can you hear us? Hello, Marie, can you hear us? Well, she's still connecting, so we'll get here shortly. So, this is a resolution, creation of a full, of a new full-time police officer position and the appointment of two full-time police officers in the village of Housick Falls Police Department. Whereas the village of Housick Falls Board of Trustees finds it is in the overall public interest to create one new full-time police officer position in the village of Housick Falls Police Department. And whereas the village of Housick Falls Board of Trustees desires to appoint two village of Housick Falls police officers who are currently employed as part-time officers to the full-time police officer position, one as created hereby and one to fill a vacancy. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the village of Housick Falls in regular session duly convenience follows: One, the village of Housick Falls Board of Trustees hereby creates one full-time police officer position in the village of Housick Falls Police Department effective March 8, 2023. Number two, the village of Housick Falls Board of Trustees hereby approves the appointment of Morgan Fisher to the position of full-time police officer in the village of Housick Falls Police Department at the pay rate of $22 an hour. The hiring of Morgan Fisher as a full-time police officer is subject to the terms and conditions of the village's collective bargaining agreement with the police union, including but not limited to service of probationary period in accordance with Rentsworth County Civil Service rules. And number three, the village of Housick Falls Board of Trustees hereby approves the appointment of Jonathan Warner to the position of full-time police officer in the village of Housick Falls Police Department at a pay rate of $21 an hour. The hiring of Jonathan Warner as a full-time police officer is subject to the terms and conditions of the village's collective bargaining agreement with the police union, including but not limited to service of probationary period in accordance with Rentsworth County Civil Service rules. So I first need the resolution to be offered. All right. Further discussion. Would you guys like to say anything? Great. Officer Alexonis, you want to wax poetic for a minute on these two officers? You want to wax poetic? Anyone else like to say anything? Awesome. Hearing no discussion, we will have a roll call vote. Trustee Shuddig. Recusal due to your. Yeah. Okay. Trustee O'Malley. Trustee Alter. Trustee Decker. Trustee Walried is absent. Deputy Mayor Ryan. And Mayor Allen is also a yes. Officer Fisher, Officer Warner, congratulations. Thank you guys very much. Thank you very much. Do you guys want to get some pictures? One of you guys will run over by the flag. Bob, you want to hop in or? Everybody want to hop in? Okay. I'll take some quick pictures. And if you guys want pictures with any families or significant others, that would be totally inappropriate. Okay. Three, two, one. Thank you. Do you guys have anyone else you want to have in pictures? Awesome. Awesome. You guys slide over a little bit. All right. No, you're good. Three, two, one. Outstanding. Thank you guys very much. Congratulations. Awesome. Thank you guys. Thank you again.
Mr. Warner, thank you for stepping up in our time.
Both of them.
You've been very short-staffed. You got thirty-nine hours, lots of hours.
Yes.
I'm sure there are times when we would not have an officer on the road without these guys.
Yep. Thank you guys very much. Alrighty. We are going to go on with the next parts of our meeting. I'm going to zip through the announcements really quickly. First off, you have it in the agenda, but the village, whoops, the village election is set for Tuesday, March 21st, from noon to nine at the Angport Municipal Building. There are two seats open for the Board of Trustees for two-year terms, and there are two individuals on the ballots, Robert Ryan and Doug Sauer. There is one seat for the Board of Trustees for one-year term. There's one individual on the ballot, Kevin O'Malley. And there's one seat for mayor for a two-year term. There's one individual on the ballot, Robert Allen. Not to say you can't do write-ins, but that's just what's going to be on the ballot, so everyone knows. All right. Number two, Housick Falls St. Patrick's Day. Yes? Oh, yes, yes, yes. Yes, we, I was very glad to get to the wake and we flew the flag in the village at half-mast in honor of his passing. And of course, we actually had to go through our archives, but trustee Downing, who passed away, was it a week ago? Two weeks ago, a little while ago. He had served on the village board for, I think we figured out, seven terms, 14 years. It was an incredible amount of time. And apart from that, he was involved in so many things. I got to know him as, when I started as a music teacher, and he was involved in the performing arts, supporting the performing arts over there because his kids had gone through there. Also a scout master and just, just involved in tons of things and just loved his community, so. Absolutely. The amount of people. Oh, yes. All right. Hypothetically, Marie has joined us. I'm not sure, but hypothetically, she may be there. All right. Okay, moving on. The St. Patrick's Day and Irish Festival is this Saturday, March 11th, beginning at 1:00 PM. There's many activities throughout the village. Kevin, do you want to say anything else?
No, that's pretty much it.
All right. Music, Irish dancing, bagpipes, lots and lots of food, and the grand marshal is Art Hyde. Senior. Did I put junior, didn't I? Whoops. All right, what's senior? All right. Don't tell junior, you'll be surprised. It is junior. It is junior. I got it right. Now I just confused everybody further. The village office will be closed again this Friday, March 10th. We'll be back to normal the following week, but we are still checking email and phone messages. The village is returning to offering a spring brush leaf pickup for residents. We have the, let me bring this up here one second. We are going to post this online on the website. I'm going to try to get it in the ESA Press. We are doing a spring cleanup. This is something that has not been going on for quite some time, but a lot of residents are coming to meetings and asking for it. The trustees made it a point to prioritize it, so thank you. And Kenny Holbrook and the DPW are going to be going after this, planning this, so thank you, guys. There are a couple of things I want to go over to make sure that we do this right and so that this can become an annual event. First off, it's going to run the first two weeks of April, April 3rd to April 14th. It's Monday through Friday both days. Collection's going to be done by our highway department during normal hours. For leaves, grass, and pine needles, you must put them in those biodegradable paper bags for proper disposal. And nothing else should be in those bags. If there are, it won't be collected. For brush and branches, we're looking for small sticks, branches four inches in diameter or less. Should not be longer than four feet each, so break them down if you need to. We're ideally looking for only sticks that came down and branches that came down from winter weather. We're not looking for you guys to clear out a whole humongous swath of your yard to do this. And the reason is, we're, right now, for this first run, we're going to limit it to one pile, four feet wide, six feet long, four feet high is kind of a max for it. It's still going to be a good amount, but if we have about 850 or so buildings putting out a pile each, that's a ton of stuff for our highway guys, so. Please put all of these items within six feet of the road, so we don't have to go across the yard. And, oh, let's see here, let's. Each morning, they're going to do a check through the entire village for the paper bags, so that those bags aren't sitting out and getting messed up throughout the weather changes. And then they'll basically start at one location in the village, say first ward, and they'll go from ward to ward to ward to ward, looking for the larger piles and getting rid of those. It may take them a few days before they cycle back, or there may not be enough piles out in the beginning and people learn about it later. So it'll be going throughout those two weeks, Monday through Friday. And if you have any questions, the highway department number is here. Ken Holbrook's email is here, or he's just hiding back there. So thank you, Ken, for taking this on. Thank you for the board for pushing this. And we're going to get this out to lots of people. If you get this, I'm going to try to send it out through email as well, so please forward it on to anyone who would want to know. I put that thing there too, but it was too hard to read, so I'm just going to skip that. Budget season is arriving. When the draft budget becomes available for review, as we have in the past, we'll post it on the village website. We'll have hard copies available at the municipal building. And we will announce budget workshops. And all of this will happen ahead of the April 12th regular meeting. Part of the reason we're not announcing the budget workshops tonight is because our treasurer is on vacation this week and will be back early next week. But as soon as we have all that stuff set, we'll get that information out to everyone. A request has come in from Fidelis Vades to use the park for an event on Thursday, March 18th. Trustees, if that is good for you, I'm looking for a motion on that to approve the use of the park from May 18th. Thank you. Any further discussion? Uh, May. I meant to say, it's May on the screen. Ignore what I say. Thank you, Marie. Oh, hi, Marie. How are you? Great, okay. Marie, you can see the, the screen, right? The PowerPoint screen?
Yes, I can. I can see it.
Outstanding. All right, thank you. All in favor? Poser extensions? All right, carries, thank you. We had another request for use of the wood park for a wedding on September 2nd, 2023, from Sarah Holcomb. If that is good, I would entertain a motion. Thank you, Decker. And Alter. Further discussion? All in favor? Poser extensions? Carries. All right. We have several presentations. We're going to start off with the Housick History and Heritage Committee. I will turn this over to Phyllis and Mike Chapman and Katie Brownell. And feel free, and I do have the pictures that you have sent me, so when you're ready for them.
Well, when Phyllis and I are going through costumes and burning butter and things, we also like to share our favorite hobby of history with our community. The Housick History and Heritage Committee is actually a collaboration between the Housick Historical Society and the Friends of Bennington Battlefield. Our goal is to both celebrate and promote our rich heritage here in our community. As many of you know, we're nearing the 250th anniversary of several important Revolutionary War battles, including our very own Battle of Bennington. Also in sight is the 200th anniversary of the founding of the village of Housick Falls. So this is really a time for our community to experience pride of place and appreciation for our unique and important history. With these important historic anniversaries in sight, we've applied for a stewardship and community engagement grant to fund three upcoming events in order to connect our local community members with their history. This grant does actually have a 10% community match clause, and we are, of course, seeking sponsorship from local businesses and individuals, and also seeking to expand our committee as well. So if you're interested, please contact us. Our upcoming events will include the Housick History and Heritage Fair right after the Fidelis event in the park. It will be Saturday, May 20th, at the Arboretum. It will be an open and inclusive event with the theme of people, places, and things. It's a free, family-friendly event and an opportunity to bring local history to our community through engagement and interaction. We're also very excited to once more bring the trolley back to Housick Falls. We'll be having a trolley service available to shuttle the public up to the Bennington Battlefield, so that the battlefield can be more accessible to people within the community who might not have transportation. We're also intending to add a stop at John Street and Main Street to help support and promote our local businesses, and we'll be having a scavenger hunt that people can participate in throughout the community. Our second event is the Community Picnic and Family Day at our Bennington Battlefield, and that will be Saturday, July 15th. We will be once more inviting people to bring their picnics to Battlefield Park, where we will offer activities for children and families, guided tours, live entertainment, and historical craft demonstrations. And again, that, those events are all free for people to attend. Our third and final event will be Voices of the Fallen. This will be held on August 5th and 6th, and it will be an original live action drama production featuring historically correct costume actors relating the stories of those who fell at the Battle of Bennington on August 16, 1777. This will be a ticketed event that seeks to educate, entertain, and also give voice to the diverse experiences of those who gave their lives at the Battle of Bennington. As we're looking toward these big events in our community and our history, we want to kind of spread and promote the idea that history is alive and well in our community. And one of the things we have come up with was to actually create original artwork by Phyllis to disland banners in the town of Rappi Village in Housick Falls.
Well, that is a part of our move to, first of all, get our people in the town and village connected with the notion that we do have interest in history here. We have had a Revolutionary War battlefield here since 1777, and not so sure that many people understand what happened there and how important it was because of those of us involved, we keep saying if it wasn't for Bennington, there wouldn't be a Sarah Tolda victory. And that's probably quite true. We understand that with the 250th coming up, which will be officially 2027, it seems like a long time in the future, but it's not when we're trying to get people involved, is that it's going to need us to build momentum among people to find out that we can hold historic events and things in town and in the battlefield that are fun. And I think a lot of people want to have some fun events in the town designed for them. They can bring their kids. They're not going to pay to go to the history fair or the picnic to just find out what a great community we really live in and how important we are historically. So to that end, we've decided to, and we included in this grant proposal, to have some promotion, beginning with three banners that we have designed to be hanging down in the village, where people see, can see them every day as a little post-up, drugstore, but also people riding through community will see them as well. So we chose three aspects of our history that we feel are cornerstone units in Housick Falls and the town of Housick. Obviously, the Battle of Bennington in the middle there is a Revolutionary era militia man soldier victorious at the battle. Walter A. Wood is also a huge presence in the community, past and present, our park is named after him. And then Bob and Ray Everly, probably still have relatives living around here somewhere. They were two musicians that were huge in the 1930s, 40s, and 50s. They sang in the big bands. They were three of the bands. And so these were three aspects of our history that we thought, let's share this with people in town. Let's get them excited about it. Say, yeah, this town has something going for it, the town of Housick. So we are asking permission tonight to have these banners come in various locations in the village. The banners will be 24 inches wide and 48 inches long. So they will be large and will be easily seen from a car driving by or somebody walking by. And what we have planned to do, Katie, Joyce Brewer, and I and Mike, we looked at some sites down in the village, and we picked some locations that we thought would be advantageous for hanging these banners and that are also related to the subjects. Obviously, the Revolutionary Soldier in the corner of John and Main and the other corner of John and, near the bank and near the coffee shop. Because that sort of is on the way to the battlefield, 10 feet away.
And it's Route 22, so the main thoroughfare.
Yep. Now with Walter A. Wood, one next to the Housick Provisions down there, because we thought, well, that's where the direction of Walter A. Wood was, that when people were working there, they crossed the old shop, Regent Road, and worked. The other one being on the corner of Main and Wilder because it's close to the park. Then for Bob and Ray Everly, we chose the spot here in front of Little Sprouts because that's across the street from where the old New Theater used to be. Years and years ago, maybe some of you don't know, that theater was there for years and years and had vaudeville programs, vaudeville theater, name it, they had it. So that's the spot, and then our little road goes through when the park is named and renamed. So we've got the other signs, banner could go there. So we are asking the village board and mayor for permission to have these banners placed at these strategic locations. They would be up for the summer at least, and it would bring us in connection with our own history and also other people coming through the town. We are confident that this Housick History Fair is going to bring a lot of people into Housick Falls. Because the aspect of the fair that's probably most influential in doing that is that the fair is inviting people that are connected with historical societies, historic sites. Reenactors will be there, other presenters, and they will perhaps be coming to Housick Falls for the first time. They are people that are interested in history, interested in battle, and they're going to be looking at our community. So we wanted to have this up as a promotion, have those people see when they come in that Housick Falls is a great place, got a great history, and maybe you might come back. So that is our request to allow us to see to it and have these banners installed in those locations. And we would like for this option.
I just want to add, Phyllis designed all the artwork on those banners. So it's all original work by Phyllis herself. So this, we're not going to run into any copyright issues. But also, it's really beautiful, original artwork, again, celebrating one of our local artists as well. Who's done that just for us.
Well, Grandma Moses is a different issue. I don't know if you are aware, I'd say very rare, but I look at the Bennington Museum. Grandma Moses is copyright. And there's quite a few hoops to jump through. If anyone would do anything, we would expect a Grandma Moses, which is unfortunate because she's cute. So that, yeah, that, that wasn't an option. Yeah, but anyway, that's, that's a no-no. We really can't do anything about that. As far as the other artists. You know, I'm looking that this is something that we would like to see proceed further down the years, that by all means, no means, those three posters represent everything that's interesting about Housick Falls.
So if I, if I could just add, and Katie, I mentioned this to you at the True Value, what about reclaiming our flag? That so-called Bennington banner, AKA 76, which before my flag broke, broke in my house and he's got it, and I had to rip it off on the table. What's everyone's thoughts on getting those flags for the, you know how we put them up on all the telephone poles along the parade route and replacing the sort of generic 50-star flags? Because that's a flag that is, the history has shown that flag was an accurate form of the Battle of Bennington. There's some scientific analysis of the fabric on getting that. But the point is, is that historically, that's the Battle of Bennington, the Battle of Housick. So I think that, and I was aware that Grandma Moses is being copyrighted and all this kind of stuff. But that is, seems to me, really one thing that we probably could steal that, at least to some degree.
Well, you know, I enjoy hearing this discourse on this topic because I think there is interest in this town to reclaim some of our history. I think that many people, if you do any traveling, and we go to a lot of historic sites, history brings in a lot of people. There's a lot of people who like to go to historic sites, things that are meaningful, and it's good for business. It really is. Especially if you can work it up over the next few years. This is a start. I think we could see ourselves going further with this kind of thing, that we've got a great historical society here in town, and Joyce Brewer does a fantastic job. There's always information coming in from different sources about our history. And I would like to see us explore more of this after this start, that by the time 2027 rolls around, we can have a pretty substantial celebration of two things, of the battle and of the incorporation of the village.
When are you looking to have these hung? Like what times, timeframes?
Well, we were hoping to have them out for, for May 20th event. So we would like them out in, by mid-May. And hopefully keeping them up through the summer. They should be durable, and I think they'll, you know, they'll stand the weather. They will look good in the community. And again, just to revisit, this is the grassroots movement, like right now. We're in the grassroots phase of this. We hope to continue to apply for the community engagement grants in the future, and then we can expand our repertoire. Wouldn't it be lovely if we had a whole village of historic faces lining up?
Hey, Kenny? Any issues or any hardware things we would need? Okay. Kenny's good with this? I'm assuming all we would just do is a motion to authorize or approve us to hang the, hang the banners? I'm assuming all we would just do is a motion to authorize or approve us to hang the banners?
We'll brush out those flags who are not that expensive, I find, from, from forming a house, and see if we can start replacing some of the flag holes with seventy-six holes.
It'd be nice to see both of them, like almost every other, like American flag.
Just the American, we should alternate, right?
Alternate, yeah.
And even if we just got like seven or ten right down the main strip, that would be awesome, really awesome.
Well, there's, there's a great variety of flags that we use in that area, too. I mean, there is the John Stark flag, which is the more likely one to go down, and that's the three mountain doors have. But there's also a flag called the Grand Heed by Chablie, Union Jack, and the corner with the stripes. They make wonderful displays. I mean, you know, the Gadsden flag, which is the don't tread on me flag, they would be beautiful in the, on the street. The thing is, they're all historic.
Yes, I agree, however, some of them have been associated more recently with certain patriot funds that maybe we could.
True, or.
I want to hear.
Bring it out, but this is going to matter in the future.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm looking for a motion to approve hanging banners by the village with Housick History.
We have a motion.
During spring and summer, we'll just say generically of twenty twenty-three? So who, 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 okay. All right, further discussion? All in favor?
I.
I. Posits or abstentions? All right.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Fantastic. Outstanding. Say that again, Marie?
It was Ryan made it and Alter seconded it. This is our microphone for the day right there.
Stolo Trelle. Stolo Trelle, what can we do here?
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you guys very much, thank you.
And your interest, we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, you're going? Okay, you'll be back.
Yep.
Okay, awesome, thank you. All right, thank you, guys. Our second presentation is from Greg, is Amanda here as well?
Amanda, Amanda has a conflict with, she actually still has a job and she had a client who wanted her work.
Oh, hold on a minute. Are you, oh, we have pins, yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Excuse me.
Some pins we have from our organization.
Oh, that's me. That's great, thank you. All right, we're going to turn this over to Greg Lawrence to talk about the, I put SVHC, but it's SBMC, Regional Advisory Board?
No, I think it was.
Is it HC?
Southwestern Vermont Healthcare.
Health, okay, okay.
They took them up. Again, following that, I'm going to be boring a second, I'm not asking for anything. I'm here to introduce the Regional Advisory Board for Southwestern Vermont Medical Center. Amanda and I are the co-chairs of a group that voluntarily act as a liaison for Housick Falls with the hospital. We meet six times a year, and we talk directly to Twin Rivers and the medical community in the hospital, and it's our job to try to feed the hospital what the community needs. And what we're trying to do is get out and just tell you guys we exist, all right? So if we can do anything to help relationships with the hospital to express things. We have done things prior to the pandemic about having health things at the armory, things about surgeries that are available and that sort of thing. We are the people that can get to the hospital, get to the people at the top of the hospital. Normal meetings when we were still having them before the pandemic, we had them right at Twin Rivers, talk to their doctors right there to find out what the community did. The hospital, we're governed by the foundation of the hospital, that's who we report to. But we talk to everybody who meets the hospital about what this community needs, all right? Housick Falls and the dealers I've had with the health center and everything else represent about twenty-five percent of the base for the hospital. And what they want to do is have somebody in the community that just tells them what you need, what we can do. And my only job here tonight is to say, we exist, Amanda and I are a contact point. If there's anything you feel the community needs or something you need educationally, you know, come in and do smoking things or anti-smoking, whatever, we can get that set up for you. Other than that, we're not asking for anything, we're just here to help. I've been here a number of times and asked for a whole bunch of stuff. Tonight, just, we're here, we're the Regional Advisory Board for the hospital, and if you need something or something the community you see as a need for healthcare, we can get it to the people at the hospital.
While you're here, it seems like it's getting harder to get appointments up at the Twin Rivers, at least it's taking a long time. Can we get in for a visit?
It is, and I, and I, I'm going to, I'm going to answer, but I'm going to, let's make it off the record, okay?
You can ask along.
No, 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 that's part of what we do, all right? But one of the things in healthcare, and I'm still involved with the health center, okay, after all these years, we cannot find people at any level to work in healthcare. We just had a meeting with the high school, with Pat Daly, who's on our board, okay? And talking about getting kids into school to go into healthcare scholarship programs and everything else. You all know there's problems with the, at Twin Rivers because of Dr. Martinez's health and everything else. We cannot find enough doctors, but it's a national issue, it's not here, it's every place. We can't, we can't get the health center full because we can't get enough nurses and aides to run and meet the state's mandate of how many people we need per patient, okay? And, you know, we've been talking about the health center for years, and we're still open, but it's a struggle, and it's all of healthcare, okay? That doesn't answer your question directly, but it is. I've been involved with this since two thousand and eleven, and I know more about healthcare than I really want to know about or thought I wanted to know about when I did it.
Did that say, I want to go through or did that not go through?
It is about this close, and I will not, because Tom D., the president of the hospital, would kill me if I vocalized my own thoughts on the state of New York. But it has dragged on and on and on. We have, we have a second person that wants to take it over, and if it's successful, it should be done in about three months. The other, just to give you some, some background, they, they were looking to unload both the CNR and CLR in Bennington. CLR, it's a finished deal that was done during the pandemic, and it's being run by a private company, and they're, they're, they're making money, okay? We are still stalled in the whole process of New York State, but please don't break that in place, okay? But we're close, we, we feel we're about three or four months away from closing that up, which will, for new people to understand, will put it back on the tax basis, because it'll be privately owned. But we've kept it open, Kevin, that's the key.
We, we as a board are very familiar with how New York State works, so.
Yes, please don't quote me to paper because I, I won't be coming here with this anymore. It, it's a very tenuous situation.
It is, yeah. Yep.
So to Kevin's, to Kevin's point, though, Greg, so recruitment is a problem for the hos-?
Recruitment, recruitment, and again, I'm not trying to pass the buck. It's every place in the country in healthcare. I mean, you can't get any level of any place who hasn't enough. What happened in the pandemic, to be honest with you, is that they did a pretty good job because people wanted to get out of the cities, and they got people coming into Bennington, that, that they, they filled positions they needed at the hospital. Now they're having a problem finding housing for them, because the doctors come in wanting some pretty nice houses, okay? So it's kind of a, stuff running downhill like this, okay? But, but they're working on it.
Plus, we're spoiled, we have Marcus, and Marcus took a lot of patients, so.
No, no, you, you, you know, one of the best things about my job in the RAB was, we used to go to Twin Rivers and we'd sit down with Marcus and Jim Carroll, and they'd say, can you get this, can you do this, can we do this? We had great discussions, now with the pandemic, we haven't met with them, and I don't know if I'll ever meet with Marcus again. But you're right, Marcus took a zillion, you know, and, and doctors that come in now, I don't want to make a judgment, I'm not qualified to make it. They won't take the number he takes.
It's, it's just different nowadays, yeah.
He talks into you.
But, but it's, it is not, I don't want you to think it's here, because it is everywhere. And I've been working with the hospital now for twelve, fifteen years, and it doesn't get any better. But the thing is, the interesting thing with the hospital, we're talking with Pat Daly, who's, again, on our committee, the schools, in my mind, I was, you know, I was the board president for a long time, all right? They're not doing enough to push those things to the kids and tell them what to do. So we've set up a link for Pat, that he's going to find out what jobs are available at the hospital at every level, whether it's administrative, it's health, it's whatever level, and what kids have to do to get into the jobs. Because that kind of stuff is just not getting out there. So that's kind of what the RAB does, we try to go in and help be in the voice of the community. Those questions actually help, help in the presentation.
Well, the same thing's happened in the trades, too. Everybody's pushing kids to go to college instead of doing the trades, and now there's not enough carpenters, plumbers, electricians.
Kevin, we could talk for, I'm, I'm not, I was on the school board a long time. That was a problem way back, okay? We got directed to everybody going to college and forgot about everybody else.
Yep. I had a student, I had a student graduate, and then within like a year, he was making more than I was as a seasoned teacher in the trades, fantastic. Anyway, do you guys have any other questions for Greg?
No.
I, I do talk to Dr. Pete Conley, it's not just Marcus, it's not just the others, and the doctor that's up, another one's in the game. That was, that was Baker left over a while ago, so it's.
Oh, no, no, there, there's been movement in it, there's just, there's no doubt about it, because it's staying every place. I mean, there was a, there was a, I can't remember his name, it was a doctor up in Dorset area that closed his practice because he was an older fellow, all right? All of a sudden, the market had six thousand more patients with no place to go, and there were no doctors.
Is that the nose and throat guy? Is that the ear, nose, and throat guy up there?
I, I, I don't want to quote, I think he's Kevin, but, but the point is, there just aren't enough out there.
Yeah.
And they can pick and choose where they go.
Yep.
Okay? I mean, I, you know, most of you know I was an retired HR man, it's recruiting nightmare for, for them. As I said, the pandemic helped, if people want to get out of the cities, that's kind of over now. And as they said, then they found out, they couldn't find places for them to live that they were happy with, so.
All right, well, thank you, Greg.
I will get that, too, then, Kevin.
Any quotes about New York State should be attributed to Amanda Har. Just kidding. She'll kill me, she'll kill me.
I live in the town, so I'm leaving, okay?
Thank you, Greg.
You're going to ask me what village residents you might be living in?
I'm not, Amanda and I are both town people.
All right, all right, thank you, Greg. All right, our third presentation is from Robert Flores and Caitlin Curran of Delaware Engineering. This came about for a couple different reasons. First off, Robert Flores has been involved in his history of engineering with so many aspects of the village of Housick Falls, from designing the new wastewater treatment plant in the late nineties?
No, we're early two thousand yet.
Okay, to designing, I think, parts of the water plant when that happened in the early to mid two thousands. And then when he was working with CT Mail, he actually was involved in designing the GAC building as an addition. And now Robert is with Delaware Engineering, and Caitlin is here as well, and they were able to come out and sit down with myself, Kenny, Jim, Josh, talk through a bunch of things on location at the wastewater treatment plant and also up at the Rogers Avenue tank. And then we sought and talked, talked through grants for a long time. And I wanted them to come to talk to you guys as a board, to give you an idea of what's out there and what's not. So I just put together a few, couple things as we head into their presentation, and I think, you'll have to tell me if I got all these right. And then I will shift over to the presentation that you guys sent. We're going to talk about the bill, which is the bipartisan infrastructure law. Within that, there is the CW clean water and the DW drinking water. Drinking water is specifically drinking water, where clean water tends to be more wastewater specific things. And we're going to talk about the general supplement and the emerging contaminants branch of that. So those are one avenue of grants. There's also through the New York State EFC, there is the EPG Engineering Planning Grants, as we've done before, the Green Innovation Grant Program, the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, yes, the intermunicipal grants, and I think, is it the Water Quality Improvement, what's the P? I couldn't think of what the P was.
Plan?
Something like that. And when we're hearing about grants, what helped me is to ask, is when we're hearing these questions, what is the award, what's the maximum award, or is it percentage based of a project such as a million dollar, two million dollar project? Is there a local match? Does that mean if, you know, it's an eighty percent grant, does that mean twenty percent of that falls on the village? What are the requirements? Does it require just the application? Is there a separate report or an engineering report or specific architectural designs? Is there a cost to apply? And the timeline is important because there's timelines to apply, there's timelines when it's announced. Sometimes projects have to already be approved in a motion for you to apply to grants, it's, it's a, a mishmash of craziness. So with that being said, let me switch over to what you sent me, and let me see if I can present this properly. Okay, I adjusted that first slide, but we can start here or we can come back to it later, if that's all right? I'm going to turn it over to Caitlin and Robert.
Okay, so there's a lot of state grants out there, it's a little confusing. So this is what we've applied for, for the village so far, and a few have been awarded. We actually have a briefing call with the CDBG group to go over why we did not get that.
Yeah, that's my bet, I don't want to tee there, did not get I, did not get it.
CDBG is a difficult brand to get, it's always been a very difficult brand to get, there's a lot of steps involved. Project readiness is a very big aspect in that. So we're going to have that call with them to kind of go over what we need to do for next round, if we do want to apply, if that's something that's of interest for the village.
Was the, was the first grant, or the second grant, any different than the first one you submitted, or is it just the same?
That one I was not involved with.
So you're talking, talking the Rogers Avenue, right?
Correct.
Yeah, it's essentially the same one, yeah, the first and second time around. The things that stop you, which is maybe your next question, and we'll get the debrief in a couple, a couple of weeks, right?
Yeah.
But they want to, they want to award to projects that are ready to go, right? You haven't completed environmental review, you don't have a design and review approval of DOH. So those are kind of, those are the kind of big steps you were missing.
And that's something that changed, because back in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, they had different requirements than they do now, right?
Yes.
As, as, as the programs get more competitive, you know, they up the ante as what's, what's needed to get a grant.
So there's more on the front end on our part than, than just applying for the grants.
That's right.
So, yeah, and, and we're going to talk through the grants, but we should, we'll also talk through the report that you guys have prepared and adjusted, so why don't we jump into grants?
Do you have copies of the first two grants?
Um, let me do that, I thought I did that. My apologies if I did not do that, let me do that. That was the, the straight up bless you, this is the grant applications that were sent in, right? All right, let me do that right now, while we go. Take it away.
So BIL, or bipartisan infrastructure legislation, legislation, this is a new, brand new grant that is eligible for clean water and drinking water. There's a few different categories. There's general supplemental, which is wastewater treatment, pumping stations, CSO, emerging contaminants as well. So the requirements are the same, however, the grant amounts are a little different. So this is brand new, like I said, through EPA, this is money that EPA has given out to each state. This is like a grant, like I said, so it's over five years that this will be available. There's not a separate application for this, it's through WEA and SRF. So once we apply for those, that's just kind of a box we check if we're interested in that. And then what you're allocated is listed on the IUP, which is linked with the clean water SRF and the drinking water SRF, which I'll explain in a few slides as well.
One little tidbit to this one, I mean, I mean, so you guys are very familiar with PFAS and all that. And we're not sure if there's a link between this and your leachate at your landfill that affects your wastewater pump. There's a potential link there, but it's not strictly there. Because the, the landfill is governed by different parts of DC than the wastewater, and is it, is it contaminated groundwater or is it just leachate? There's, it's not clear whether that's something that you could use to address your issues with, with your landfill, but you also have, you know, it's complicated, everything with you guys is complicated.
Yes, that is the truth.
Yeah, just recently we saw some huge tracks awarded or grants awarded across the capital region for communities for clean water. Yeah, just recently we saw some huge tracks awarded or grants awarded across the capital region for, um, communities for clean water. If we're ground zero, we can't get a grant for, what's the amount of this one that we're asking for?
So, so we've, we've, we've purposed the water project, right? So like the, when it was just Rogers Avenue, we were shooting for the, the million dollars, which is the max the CDBG goes. But since then, we sat down with, uh, with the water and DPW and Neil before he retired and said, okay, what are all the needs? Put it all together. What does it all add up to? So right now with the report that's floating around, uh, once it's updated, it's about six million dollars with the, uh, uh, you know, drinking water is supposed to clean water, uh, project.
Those are on the slide. You'll see those in a bit. Alright, next one?
Um, and this is another just synopsis of the clean water bill, general supplemental. It's grant funding up to fifty percent of eligible project costs. Um, or maximum up to twenty-five million. So the project must be listed on the hardship funding line, the IUP category D. Um, which in June is when the IUP listings are due, so that's something we can put together, um, to list on the IUP. The village is listed on the IUP, the clean water, um, IUP for a different project.
For the, for the UV project?
Yeah, it's listed on there and was listed eligible for BIL. Um, so that's great that you guys are listed on there. We're gonna want to update that this year. So for the next IUP, we can see if we can get, you know, a little bit more money for that.
Okay. Uh, next one? Is that the next one?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yep, so this is just kind of stating what I said with the IUP, um, and just making sure the IUP is up to date. Um, and then, like I said, this is, this is an annual grant that we're, they're just gonna put more money into, um, for up to five years.
And the IUP, that's that annual report that lists all the various projects and phases and that's where other grants.
Right, so every year you can update that, update the project listing and, you know, if you need more money for the next year, that's how you can get that from the state.
Okay.
So this is for emerging contaminants, so, um, same thing. This one is a hundred percent of eligible project costs, up to twenty-five million. Um, you have to be listed in the emerging contaminant section in the IUP, which, um, I wish I, I sent that slide to you because that would be good for everybody to see, but I can send that out too.
Which side was that one?
What was that?
She didn't send.
I didn't send.
Oh, okay, didn't send, okay.
That would be good for, I'm gonna see it as a little confusing now. So they have a bunch of drafts of the IUP and then they make it finalized so you can go online and actually see how everybody is ranked on that IUP.
And it's wild that our situation is so unique and complicated that we have a state super fun site with the landfill and that we're, um, joined in that with Honeywell. And even though Honeywell has taken the vast majority of the expense, it almost feels like if they were to design a solution for this, that, that this could be something that the two of us combined could go for.
Right.
Especially with hundred percent, up to hundred percent, oh my gosh. So, alright, drinking water side.
Okay, so drinking water side, it's very similar to clean water, um, the process to get on the IUP for the drinking water and this is through the Department of Health. Um, very similar form, just we have to fill out to get the project listed. Um, and just like the clean water, there's a general supplemental fund, emerging contaminants, and then lead service line replacement is another big one that the state is really pushing, is lead service line. Um, so there's a lot of money out there for this, for these replacement projects. So the general supplemental grant funding for drinking water projects is seventy percent of eligible costs, not to exceed five million. Um, emerging contaminants is up to a hundred percent of eligible project costs. First priority given to projects that address PFAS, that's, um, very big for the state.
Yep.
And then the lead service line, that's seventy percent of project costs, um, not to exceed ten million, or lead service line inventory, um, is up to a hundred percent. So this is again, new, um, so we're kind of trying to still figure out how, you know, they're gonna go um, into the grant side of things with this and distributing this money.
With, with this? Are these pipes in the road or are these the service lines from the main to the house?
So, so both, right? But, uh, it's, it's, most of the lead is in the services. Uh, there, if, there are some, there is such a thing as old cast iron pipe with lead joints, right? Um, and the, the, the repurposed enlarged, uh, water report, right? Identify a bunch of streets with the oldest pipes.
Yep.
They need replacement. So the oldest pipe also means the oldest neighborhoods, which are the ones that are likely to have lead services. So that's where we're, we're heading with that, with that, with that, uh, project.
Okay.
That there'll be a component of lead replacement, so give us the money for lead, to replace our water rings, it's gonna.
Cast iron engine pumps with, with lead settings?
So, so there?
Did you say cast?
Cast iron.
I figured it would be cast iron drain pumps with the, with the open, but is there?
So the, the same, same thing, but for pressure water, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So like, you went back in history, you go from wooden pipes to cast iron to ducted iron and now just stuff, plastic and ducted iron.
What's the inventory? I'm sorry, were you done?
Yeah, I was just, I was just curious.
What's the inventory project? Is that literally?
You have to, um, there's a deadline, uh, for you to identify who in your village has lead services or who may potentially have lead services. Uh, so there's, there's, there's some funding available to do that, sir.
Ooh, let's talk about that later this week. Cause I know that deadline is sometime later in the, this calendar year.
The tank at Rogers Avenue or?
That's coming, but this is separate stuff.
Right now, the way it's shaped, it's one, one project. It includes pipes, Rogers Avenue, and solving the whole pressure issue on Saratoga Avenue and, uh, Non-Autumn Street.
Look, what, um, all, but Saratoga's not in the village, so we, we're going outside the village to work on that?
No, we're making changes inside the village to, uh, affect pressure, but we'll, we'll show you that we have the, the picture and schematics of what, what all those are for.
Right, because they're your pipes, they're your customer.
But right now, um.
I just thought they were talking just about that.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, this is a, overall, all different grants opportunities, but then we're gonna move into Rogers Avenue and the other things that we're, we're working on.
Okay, these are just a, a few BIL program requirements. We have, you have to comply with American Iron and Steel, Davis Bacon prevailing wage, um, DBEs. There's other, you know, a few other procurements, um, that we can get into once you're awarded BIL. Um, some other federal requirements, like I've said, the AME procurement, um, BABA, um, disadvantaged business enterprise. So there's a bunch of things, you know, we have to comply with and like I said, since this is new, we're going through this with a few other municipalities right now. Um, so there is a learning curve for everybody right now. Since this is so new, the state is trying to figure it out as well. Um, because the federal, you know, it's.
That's so typical.
Yeah, dumps us the money. Um, but now we're trying to figure out how it's gonna work to, to distribute it to everybody. Okay, so another, um, set of grant programs out there and these are through the CFA. So the consolidated funding application process, which usually is open in July, um, so the, the application is due in July. So there's a few different opportunities here that we'd like to apply for, the engineering planning grants. Um, so this is for the, a project that we want to get listed on the IUP to become an eligible CW SRF project. So this is that initial.
Just to, uh, bounce off of that, that EPG grant is, tends to be like a twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollar range award?
Yeah, it's thirty to fifty, depending on size of the village.
Oh, okay. Um, that is how we got to the wastewater treatment plant, UV, um, plants. We got an EPG to finance, in that case it was MRB, to come up with a plan and design and finish the report and that report was used, um, altered, altered by you guys, but used to continue on with further funding requests. So EPGs, we've done those before.
Right, because the goal is to get listed on that IUP for clean water or drinking water and this is the first, you know, step for the grant process.
So what does the color coding on the map represent? Anything?
Those are just the regional councils that we have to comply to. The CFA has specific questions based on the regional council.
Area, okay.
Right, exactly. So it just helps to kind of see that sometimes, see what you're lumped in with. Um, the GIGP, um, this program is through the DEC. Um, they are big with green water, the stormwater infrastructure, um, water efficiency, energy efficiency, so water meter, water metering. We do a lot of water meter grants. Um, and this is also spring of two thousand and twenty-three time period. But it is very up in the air because they've been changing deadlines in the past year, so we just kind of keep an eye out for it.
So our water meters, I guess what I've heard is it's gonna become obsolete with that cover insulation of the water meters, or is that the point?
We've, uh, we've applied for, for a bunch of people, different applications for water meters, right?
Yeah.
The ones that have been successful are the ones that did not have meters and needed meters. So the ones that had meters and needed to be upgraded, uh, haven't been getting grants. But I, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Do you know, do we have a time people on that? Do you know?
On, on the one it's not gonna work anymore?
Yeah.
Um, I'm sure Jim knows, uh, but, uh.
It's definitely on the radar.
I know a lot of people, um, the heads, the water meter heads, that when they go bad, you're replacing them with a different model. Um, and then normally now you can have the model, so it's sort of, instead of the radio read, it can be also radio and cellular. Because ultimately, the, everything will be supported with just cellular. So I, I'm, I'm sure you've heard a lot of this already, but it's, it's, uh.
No.
It's a problem that everybody's dealing with. Um, and some people have meters that are younger than yours and are like, come on, seven years ago we put all the meters and now they're?
Yep.
Now it's obsolete, right?
Yep.
Yeah, people are gonna be angry about that.
Right.
Still gonna have to buy all, everybody's gonna buy a new meter?
That's a, that's a coming question for the next, uh, year, couple of years, is how are we going to attack replacing?
Yeah, first they built the whole lead then, right? They changed the requirement, it was bronze's letter.
Yep.
So they changed the regulation of how much lead can be in the bronze. So most meters where it's exceeded it. And then, um, and then now the, the way you read a meter is becoming obsolete. It's become such a headache.
WEA, this is another, um, big grant that we go out for, um. Clean, and I don't think apply for WEA.
For the, for the UV project, yeah, yeah.
UV, okay. Um, so yeah, this will be coming up.
That's the train, sorry. It sounds like a looming spaceship, but it's just the train and goodbye.
I suspect you also have a deal with the pump station.
What's that? Yes, yes. Do you remember when we replaced the pump station up on Rensselaer?
Uh, yeah, that wasn't that long ago, right?
That also had to be a funding behind it.
Okay.
And that probably also had an EPG behind it to do the design work on that. I wonder if Snow Street also did as well, because we did the work up on Snow Street.
Well, I believe Snow Street was a CDBG.
Yep, okay. So a lot of these projects that we've done somewhat recently had some funding behind it.
Um, intermunicipal grants, these ones, we don't have too often available clean water, drinking water projects that serve multiple municipalities. Um, this is also, we apply through, um, when we apply for WEA and SRF, this is something else we can apply for and it goes, you know, along the same.
Our grant, the, our, our, um, six million dollars or total has parts of our system that's outside of the village and the town that qualify.
Well, it's, it's, it's in the, parts are in the town, but they're, but it's pipes that are owned by the village.
Okay, so it doesn't quite work that way.
Typically applies, for example, you have, uh, with demo with the city of Albany and, and the town Gillon, where they had an interconnect.
Okay.
Between the two, two municipalities. So that was the intermunicipal part of it.
Okay, alright.
Um, project eligibility, so water quality, infrastructure projects, municipal, um, municipally owned sewage treatment work projects. Um, construction or replacement or repair, projects must, um, result in construction, include the EFC terms and conditions. Um, and they're being on project readiness as well. That's something to think about EFC.
Yeah.
So EFC and DOH will consider the factors, quality, um, water quality improvement, um, financial needs, readiness to advance to constructions, again, um, project readiness. Level of demonstrated community support, which they really have just started pushing this year. Um, the environmental justice areas that are encompassing your village, um, benefits to local municipalities also helps too. Um, all awarded projects must comply with the environmental review, which is SEEPOR, SHIPO, um, smart growth form, MWBE requirements as well. Um, they also must comply with these for SRF. Ordered projects, uh, must comply with, um, American Iron and Steel, just like with SRF.
Alright.
Um, the WEA program requirements, so this is in conjunction with BIL, so all of this money is, usually what they'll do is they'll send you a letter for WEA. Um, and then this year they then sent a, a letter for BIL and letting you know what you're awarded for SRF. So all of this is done kind of at the same time. WQIP, that, these were actually just announced recently. This is another big, um.
I see a word to have from one there, right?
Yes, yeah. So they were really late this year, but again, everything changes each year with the state, especially with BIL just starting this year. Um, so the primary priority is the wastewater effluent disinfection. Um, the secondary priority is the CSO overflows, watershed plans, um, the general wastewater, and then these are the match requirements for each. It's twenty-five, twenty-five and sixty for general wastewater.
So the effluent is part of the project that's being added to the wastewater treatment plant is a UV disinfection on the, the effluents.
Right.
Um, we're in the process right now, um, actually I just spoke with, um, uh, the state on this.
We did.
They're, I think they're in the finishing stages of, of giving us our speed use permit finally. Um, but we have this project of the UV stuff ready to go in at the wastewater treatment plant, fully designed, ready for bid, but we can't bid until we have the speed use permit. So hopefully that's coming in the, uh, next week or two, so.
So, um, turn the clock back a little bit, right? It's like, uh, the mayor was saying, you, you had, you got the engineering planning grant?
Yep.
We did that. We used that report to apply for the WQIP, which you received, so you just got a million dollar grant for the UV project. And then the following year, we applied for WEA, so, um, at the time, because construction costs are going crazy, as you know. So at the time, two years, two, I guess it's two years ago. It was a one and a half million dollar project, uh, you got a million dollars through WQIP. And then WEA is twenty-five percent of, it's not paid by another grant, so twenty-five percent of the half million. And the rest would be a zero percent interest loan. Um, so, you know, time has passed, costs gone up, we'll see what the, what the, what the total, where we end up with. But the WEA still would be twenty-five percent, it's not paid by the WQIP grant, and you, and then you have the zero percent financing.
If your head is spinning right now, that's, that's the correct response on all this.
Um, these are the, just, um, different categories within WQIP, non-agriculture, non-source, non-point source, um, twenty-five percent match. These are, you know, some of the eligible projects for that. Land acquisition for source water protection, um, twenty-five percent matching for this one. Salt storage, this is another one that we have, um, quite often actually, um, the eligible projects. So construct new structure for, to enclose exposed salt or salt sand mixtures. So this is a fifty percent match. Um, again, all projects have to comply with the Office of General Services. So now we're jumping to CDBG grants. So this is through the Office of Community Renewal. Um, these grants are a little difficult to get. Um, the village has applied in the past. Um, so they are, you know, like I said before, project readiness is very big with this. Um, hitting all the deadlines, there are a lot of things needs, that need to be passed prior to receiving this grant. Um, so again, develop viable communities, um, benefit low, moderate income persons or families, aid and prevention elimination. Um, of light, meet an urgent community development need, so it's seventy percent. Public infrastructure funding sources, so it's up to a million dollars for cities, towns and villages. Um, and then joint applications as well, so public water systems, public sanitary sewers, stormwater systems, those are the typical activities that we apply for.
I'm sorry, can I go back? Um, so a very typical, um, approach we've done and been successful with other projects. See the, the middle bullet there on the near state CDBG with, uh, committed co-funding? So a lot of these programs, you know, they, they don't like to just give awards to projects that never happen, right? So when you have a, a project that's a hundred percent ready to go, they like to jump on board and that's where the co-funding comes in place. So if you, if you already have a, a drinking water SRF project with all the environmental and DOH approvals. Um, and then you apply for CDBG, they're more likely to award the money and they're more likely to award the money one point two five, if they're one. Um, so what, what happens? So what happens often is that first we get the either WIA water or just drinking water S R F money. And then the next year, you get the C D B G. Of course, you never know, nothing's guaranteed, but that's, that happens several times. The one year you get one grant, and the next year, the other agency jumps in.
But again, it puts all the early legwork and early costs on the village.
That's right.
You can't know if you're going to get the grants, and you can't, yeah, it's very frustrating.
Um, so yeah, we touched on this before, there's just a few other eligibilities. Preliminary engineering for water sewer, asset management, community needs assessment. So there's just a few other things that are eligible. So this is a brand new act that the state came out with, it's very new, they're still trying to get some information out to everybody.
This is the one with water for remember, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Well, most people.
Bond Act. Yeah, there's, should be a webinar coming up, I think, in a few weeks for E F C to kind of go over this a little bit more.
So they haven't defined much of anything in this yet?
Not really.
Do they have any timeline on when they think they'll be opening up applications and?
That's what I'm hoping to hear at that webinar is when we're gonna have a little bit more information, because it is, you know, it's a big.
Yeah.
Good chunk of money.
Alright.
Um, the water quality improvement and resilient infrastructure, minimum two million for, I'm sorry, two hundred million for water improvement and infrastructure projects. Two hundred fifty to support municipal stormwater grants, green infrastructure. Again, lead service line is another one that is linked in with this, it's not a big state priority right now. Um, so some of the priorities, advanced environmental justice, at least thirty-five percent of the funds will be directed towards disadvantaged communities. Most grants that we apply for is, the priority is to advance environmental justice areas in disadvantaged communities.
So just, this is kind of a new thing, it's really started last year. The state-developed environmental justice zones, so there's a website you can go to and you can see where they are, you're not even one of them, right? So the people that are in that map are inside these zones are more likely to get grants than the people are not.
A lot more.
So how do they determine that? Let's say, who's if you're one of the poorest communities in Rensselaer County? Is it called, is it both like, it's inner cities, is that where the zones are?
A lot of them are.
But those cities might be more well off than the town. Who's if they still own that zone?
They could go by median household income as well, that's a big factor.
Yeah, so we're not in one of these areas?
We're not.
Oh, yeah. What's that?
We have, we're just people.
Alright, so now we're gonna, so that was kind of an overview of all the various grant things that are out there and kind of how they apply. Now we're gonna focus in on what Delaware has been working on with our water guys, our sewer guys, our D P W guys, so.
Yeah, so you got the, so this is the timeline for, like I said, the U V project is a bit old. And that pretty much has about every grant that you could get at the moment, because you've got, you know, the million dollar W Q I P and, and whatever the math equals.
The twenty-five percent one.
Twenty-five percent of half a million.
And the zero percent interest.
Zero percent. So because you have those previous awards, and when you apply for grants, they ask you, have you, do you have other awards? So that project is pretty much set.
Yeah.
You know, grant wise, financial wise, for now, right?
Yeah, for now.
It's always for now.
For now.
So we're focused on the water side. So this timeline is for the water project as we're fine tuning now, right? So there was a draft report that was done last year that combined the Rogers Avenue tank work plus other, other, you know, pipe replacements, pipe replacements.
These are the pipe replacements that they're talking about? I think you guys were wondering about the pipe replacements, these are some of the locations.
Yeah. It's hard to see in there, but some of the streets that are covered in there are Scott, Madison, Woodbridge, Elm, Cummings, Manton, McCannan, Seaworth, Hampton, Corrie Street. So it was spread out. You've had several other projects in the village replacing water mains, so these are, these are the leftovers, I guess.
Yeah.
Where you have basically very small pipes, very old pipes, pipes that leak a lot, that's what, that's what got on the list.
And this list was created because Jim and Josh knew that there were some lines that needed to be replaced and said, let's put all this together in one plan so we can get it organized and go for grants.
Right, that's, that's kind of, I guess the message is getting for grants is complicated and, you know, so instead of applying for just, say, one, one, one street here. Let's put it all together and spend the effort to get grants for everything.
So can, can you do this for, because I'll be honest, I'm not an engineer, I do that for my work and stuff, but it's, this is a little more technical than one of those. The stuff that you can do to get us on track, so you can let us know which month that we need to do something.
Well, if you, if you go back to the timeline, so we.
Do we bring up the report?
What's that?
Do you want me to bring up the report?
No, well, this, this goes to your point, right? If we're gonna, every year, this is a cycle of grants, right? And if we're gonna do the twenty twenty-three cycle, which is the goal.
Yep.
This is roughly, this is what we have to do, and these are the things we have to do, if we can do it sooner, better, right? But if we get to July, and we haven't done SEAKER, and we haven't done SHIPPO.
So this is stuff you, you can do to help us?
Right.
This is already in the barrel, ready to go.
Right, so like we, like we did, we prepared the secret documents last year for Rob Shadman, but it, you know, it never, it never made it to the board, so. For many reasons, whatever they were, they're out.
I talked to Andy, there's confusion with the, with the design, but yeah, that's not gonna be an issue.
But this year, we, I mean, this is about my opinion, obviously, I don't know about secret grants, so this, this is stuff that you guys can do, that you can present to us, we can approve, and just move this process along.
Yep, yep.
So.
Does it include, like, does this include Rogers tank and the other projects all in one?
That's right.
Yes.
So what's, what's better to do, because Roger was leaking, is it better to focus on one project first and then move on to another?
Well, so the, the way these projects are scored, they're, they're scored based on how much good you do, how many things you fix, right? So you'll get, you'll get a score for fixing up a tank that needs to be fixed, and you get a score for replacing lead. So if you combine the two, you got more points, right?
High score wins.
That's right.
And there's a lot of things that fall into it, and here's a really funny little tidbit that I'm gonna share. If we were, if we had a consent order on one aspect, say this pipe is broken and the state says we're sticking you with a consent order, you have to fix this in two to three years, that would actually help our score.
Guess if we got it about Cambridge in the last hundred years.
Yeah, so.
Guess if we got it about Cambridge last year.
So even though we've been proactive to try to get this replaced, we're actually in a better point system standing if an agency comes forward and, and sticks us with a consent order.
So it would be, a mandate, we have to, right, we go up higher and.
Yes, because that makes, that makes the scoring higher, which makes us more likely to get the grants.
So like right now, the Red Sack County Health Department says, you should really replace your, your water tank, right, because it's leaking. But if they, if they went the whole ninety yards to give you a court order that says you must replace the tank.
Works better for us.
I think you'd run us a check.
I guess, I guess all I'm saying is, the technical detail is a little above my head, I'm not an engineer, but just, I think you just need to know what to do.
Yeah, so, so the steps are.
Give us a path and success.
So the engineer report that, that we've been, uh, massage, establishes the, the project, right, the scope of the project and the cost of the project, right? Estimated cost of project. And then that allows you to do SEAKER and SHIPPO, because that depends on what the project is. And then once you clear that hurdle, now you go to bond resolution. And have you guys gone through a bond resolution?
We have, yes, oh, yes.
Unfortunately, we have.
Oh, yes.
The bond resolution doesn't mean you, you're taking out a loan, it's just, you've got resolution, given the authority, that if you did the project, this is how much it could cost, right? So, so that's like a bond resolution right there, right, it's part of the middle of the screen there.
That's right, yeah.
And bond resolution, so you pass bond resolution, you have to have thirty day permission for any period, stopper period, you know, all that takes time. And so a complete application means you've done everything, engineering report, SHIPPO, SEAKER, bond resolution.
Yep.
So just let us know.
Oh, yeah.
I guess that's the best way to do this.
Yeah. So.
So I'm favored by the grants that are hundred percent match.
Right.
I don't think we're, I don't think we're in a big position to pay down more debt.
No, we aren't.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can see the, like, C D B G, which is why we started there a couple of years, is the, is the only one that's grant only, right? But, you know, not much success there, just, just the thing by itself.
How much do you think a lot of these grants, especially in the district by the New York State, are politically?
Well, let me put it this way, right, so we had those announcements on Monday for the W Q I P, right? So those were applied in July of last year, right? And through the C F A process. And normally they're awarded in late November, early December, right? Which most of those, the, the C F A includes like, you know, probably, you know, a hundred different grant titles. They're all awarded except W Q I P. Why? Only the governor knows, right? And instead of doing it by December, they waited till March, right? Why? Because the, the technical people, the D E C had reviewed the reports, the applications, they had scored them, they had sent the recommendations to the governor's office, right? And they sat there for, since July to March. And then they, then they gave you awards. So, you know.
Just seems like, seems like a lot of villages and towns are much more well off, more well off than you are at getting grants and.
The ones that need it done.
Yeah.
Yes, sometimes it's a clear thing, right, you have like some catastrophe and they need money, but a lot of these, you know, it's, it's a. Lobbying, I guess, is the, is the one.
So you, 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 you bad off the first two grants you know?
We have a, a scheduled meeting with, with them for March, you know, August?
Uh, twenty-ninth, I think, I have it in my calendar, let me check.
To get, to get a debrief from it, right?
To find out why, why we didn't get those grants, that would make it, they would.
Yeah, March twenty-ninth.
You know, typically, do those people after you get rejected the first time?
Yeah, I think, I think they, so, you know, those announcements came in December, right? So we put in a couple, hey, we'd like to know, hey, we got the, hey, we're very busy, we'll get back to you, right? So, so now we're finding out.
And normally they'll send out a letter too, saying you were rejected, this is why, and some, you know, sometimes it's SEAKER, SHIPPO, something is wrong. Or there's just not enough money. They'll send you a letter that says your application was fine, but there's not enough money. But this year and the previous year, they did not send out as many letters notifying you of why you did not receive the award. And kind of just left it up to you to call for a debrief. So when I spoke to the person over at Office of Community Renewal, they let me know, you know, since this application was twenty twenty-one, there is gonna be a lot that's different for the next round. But can still give us a good idea of what we should do, what those requirements will be, what will change, which is straightforward.
Yeah.
But what we've learned from other, other debriefs from other projects is, those are the kind of things we're hearing. It's like, you didn't, you didn't have the environmental done, you don't have D O H approval, engineering plans, so you're not, you're not as ready as other people.
When you say people are lobbying, were they lobbying?
You're elected representative, right, you're assembly man, you're senator, you're, you're governor, right?
And they have a second D O H grant?
I meant, I meant to assume that it's, it's sort of majority, you know, what you said, right?
Right.
And we're not.
There was a, there was one Rensselaer County award in the W Q I P list, it was SCODAC. I just looked that up right now. So it was a SCODAC wastewater treatment improvements. That was the only Rensselaer County one listed. I mean, not every county had a ton, but it's just interesting. So going back to the sort of the.
I would be a completely cynical, I mean, it's not all cynical, right?
Yeah, but going back to the sort of the six million dollar multiple plans, there's this, and he gave us some details, but I don't think we need to go too deep into all the replacement stuff. This is the Rogers Avenue tank area right here, this is the top of Rogers, and this is Ashley Drive, and this is the location right here. Do you want to talk through a couple of different ideas we had on this?
Maybe go back to that, the overall, the area there?
Sure.
I don't, it's a little hard to tell, but you see a square, you see a circle?
Square.
So square is your existing tank.
This right here.
And so there's kind of three typical alternatives effort for replacing that tank. One is tear it down and build it again, the same, exact same way, concrete, short, in the ground. Another is build a new tank next to it, which is what the circle would be. And then when you, and with the circle alternative is how big of a circle which affects how tall of a tank, right?
Yeah.
So the efficient sized tank in terms of cost of steel and concrete puts you at about a thirty foot tall tank, fifty-three feet diameter. If you went to the twelve foot tall tank, that would be an eighty foot diameter. So, you know, so it's less, I mean, you could fit it on your site, but it's less efficient, which means it costs more money to do the same thing, right?
Couple of years back, when this originally had kind of gotten to its first design, several residents from that area came and said, we're not gonna be happy if there's a thirty foot high tank up there. That was what sort of got us thinking again about how do, how can we approach this differently?
Is there, what's, do you have a ballpark on what it costs to tear the other one down and rebuild it compared to a new tank?
Yeah, we're figuring, it's about two hundred thousand more, so like say one and a half is one point three.
To rebuild the old one?
Yeah.
Is that the, this?
Uh, glass fuse is a steel tank.
Okay. Alright, and this was the other question you guys had, um, this was the.
You did have, sorry, so one column is steel, the other column is concrete, right?
Yeah, okay.
Now, there's a couple of other, there's, there's some, you know, I'm rounding, there's a little bit of bits and pieces to it. But yeah, if you look at these numbers, you look at one point one and one point four, right?
Yeah.
And one's concrete and one's, one's.
Steel.
Steel.
This is the steel one?
If you're familiar with the tank you have on, on.
Rogers, Ashley, yeah.
Same style as that one.
Yeah.
Cobalt blue, aluminum dome.
Oh, no, no, you're talking about the, the big tall one up on Rensselaer Street?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Sorry, yeah.
Rogers is where you have.
Where, yeah.
Where your copy tech is.
Yeah, so those big tanks that are up on, up by Snow Street on Rensselaer, that's, that's what they're talking about for the steel ones.
So that, that style of tank is, doesn't require painting, that's the advantage of that style? Where just plain old steel that's painted, you know, requires repainting every twenty, twenty years if you're lucky, and it costs a lot of money to paint tanks nowadays.
Now, this was the other one that was built into this. Right now, this is, where's my mouse, Carr Street up here?
Yeah.
And this is Munsel Street, this is Webster Avenue, and this up here is Saratoga and Albany. And the proposed idea is to link these lines together and change the valves over here so that instead of Saratoga and Albany being supplied through this area. It's actually coming from over here, and it changes the pressure greatly up in this area where it currently is.
I don't know if we've got any residents from that neck here?
Greg was from there.
Okay, so, so, you know, since you're higher, higher, higher in elevation, you have low pressure? And so the people that live there have their own booster pumps in their houses, which strictly speaking is not allowed, but, you know, alternative business of water, right?
I lived on Webster, no problem.
You have it, yeah.
On Webster or on?
I lived on Webster, no problem.
It's more Saratoga and Albany.
Yeah, it must be.
Because they're down.
Because I have like ninety pressure or higher.
They're all over me.
But they're like forty, thirty, sometimes lower up there.
There's some residents of Wall Street, in the upper Wall Street, that have really bad water pressure, like, it's probably below the.
The threshold? Below thirty-five?
Did that improve after the?
Had to run around the shower to get wet.
Barely pressure, it triples out the, the Wall Street's later.
Did that, did that improve after Snow Street?
They said it was one, it was never good.
Is that your mom?
Oh, alright.
So the only thing that's happening on, on, there's, you have a booster pump station, right? So the, so that's why, that's, that's. So the, so that's why, that's, that's how you would increase the pressure here, right? So you would extend the line that's connected to the booster pump station to, to feed those streets.
So would that help those lots where they're above Saratoga and Albany streets that have been empty for years?
There's a, there's a whole set of spots that could have been developed and never were.
They're, they're high, they're the top of the.
They're the highest elevation, yeah.
So they, they would have enough water to build without boosters.
They've never been able to do that because we would have to have something different with our system, whether it would be this or a separate pump, a pump station up there.
Yeah, so the idea here is to use the existing booster station and not build a new one.
Right.
But it requires piping, but piping is better than a whole other pump station.
Yeah.
I mean, it must be. I don't know, do you want down the ladder up there more?
I do.
Like the whole left side of the street, right? If you're going back towards the building.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they're, they're not gonna get developed and until at minimum, the, the water is better up there. That was one of the reasons, I think, that that kind of all got halted. This is way, way, way back when.
So one, one of the approaches for the, the idea, when we sat down with, uh, with Jim and Josh and Neil, was it, and Kenny, was that the, the project should include everything that's needed? Um, so, you know, this, the small streets with small pipes and the tank. And so we apply for, apply for it all at once. Um, now we've, you know, you don't get all the grants, you can do, say you do the boundary solution for six million, but you don't get all the grants you're hoping to get. You can do less, right? But you can't, but, uh, with, once you, once you apply, you can't grow your project. You can shrink it, but you can't grow, right? It's kind of like price is right tools. So, so that was the thought behind adding, you know, put, what are all the needs, put it all together, bring it one spot. And then also you have an idea, you know, you have, you have a six million dollar need, or, or do you have a three million dollar need, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you don't do it all at once, but if you did it all at once, that's what it would be.
So, so if we, we didn't, so you, you, you apply for the six million, you don't get it all, so then we could pick and choose with the monies we do receive, what projects we're gonna complete?
That's right.
Okay.
And, and just kind of to, to, to wrap all this up, all this stuff has been worked on, it's in the report that's on the annual listing. The report is being adjusted again for the next listing and we have the map of the next things we're gonna do over the next several months to continue to pursue this. And if we can get funding for some or all of these, obviously, I think, I, I don't, I won't speak for all of you, but I think our priority would be Rogers Avenue Tank first, the replacement second, and probably this third. But if we get some funding, that green lights us to continue to go into the design phase, um, start to put it out for beta, and hopefully get even more funding down the road, so.
Yeah, so, so this, this year is dedicated to doing all those things, right? Shipoh, Seeker, boundary resolution, applications, right?
Yeah.
So how much is it due right now?
So I think in, in the past, it's, it's been in the like five grand neighborhood, you know, it's, because at, at this point, we have the information, it's just filling out the forms, packaging it a little differently. Uh, and when the applications are, are put, are put out, uh, you know, we're basing on last year's application. So when this year's application comes out, they might want something different.
So, I think.
Can't be that much, right?
You, you said you needed a design for, we, we sent this out for the project type of tank, cause you don't have a designer?
So, that's what I'm saying, for, for the CDBG money, uh, that would be next year's, not this year's, right? I mean, you, you could, we could apply this year, but I, I think what, I'm pretty sure I know what the application would be.
Yeah.
So this, so this year you apply for, we, uh, bill, uh, the other ones, right? And, uh, and then next year, you apply for CDBG.
If we get something, we can start into design.
Right.
And then once the design is completed, that will make us eligible for a different grant.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, as long, as long as you keep the neighbors in the loop, we're getting closer to that point.
Yeah.
Definitely.
I know you, you talked about not a cobalt blue tank, but a green tank, it got to be a, a big one, like one thing.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so, so that, that, that style tank, for whatever reason, have very limited color choices? It's like cobalt blue, forest green, and some kind of sand color, right? It's like white, I, I don't know why it's only three choices, but. Yeah, that's what, that's what they make.
No, no, I, I know that, but, so do you guys have any other questions for them about this and this process? Doug, did you have any questions on this? Anybody? Okay. Great, awesome. Thank you guys so much for coming out, doing this. I emailed you guys all the files that I thought I had emailed, uh, prior, my apologies. Um, thank you guys very much. We're gonna move on with the meeting. Before we do, I don't have any updates, but I am gonna take a quick moment to sign student papers if they need to go, because we typically do this at the hour and a half mark, which we are past, so. Students, you guys can come up to, uh, any member of the board and get your, uh, sign off for your, uh, for your hours, what do I need to do right here? Here you go. Hi there. Yeah.
Good night.
We haven't finished yet. There you go. Hey, guys. Don't forget to fill out the stuff.
Yeah.
Been sitting here for an hour and a half and you haven't filled out the paperwork. All right. Oh, that, there, yeah, that sounds about right. There you go. All right. Thank you, guys. Mark, you want us to sign anything? All right. All right, I don't have any additional updates, because holy cow, we've been doing that for like an hour and a half. Uh, people to be heard section, uh, just as a reminder, we record meetings, so please begin with your full name and street address. Would anyone like to share anything?
There's nobody left.
Cause everyone's gone. It was all up the floor, you know, I'm just kidding. Okay?
Yes, I like you.
Yes, I bet. All right. We're gonna move on to our reports, police reports. Paul? See you later. No comment.
I don't have anything, I'll send away, does any questions, right?
Did you guys have any questions?
The only question I have, Paul, is looking at the call history. For twenty twenty-two, the total was thirty-one oh three, and the totals for twenty twenty-one were only fifteen fifty-four.
So, so the asterisk is because right in twenty twenty-two, we started tallying every single call that came into the county as opposed to calls that we responded at. So from twenty twenty-two on, it was a different counting system than we had done previously. One of the things I'd love to do is to go back and get that same data for those years, but it's just, you know.
Okay. That's, I just.
Nope, yep, that's why I leave that footnote on there, cause it's a, it's a very weird thing.
We have the ready to take us on River Road? Yeah. I mean, we have a patrol over there, sitting over there. Of course, you, you can hit some other places, still awesome call.
I know Morgan said he was over there a couple of days right after that last meeting, they came up. I'm standing, cause my back is killing me.
So, so we had twenty-four traffic stops in the month before we had a hundred and twenty-five tickets, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Paul, the only question I had, um, as far as the, um, I know I sent you the, we sent, sent the email about, about the radar. So you, you're checking in to see.
Yeah, I looked quick the other night, I didn't see anything, it's casual, but I'm gonna do some more checking.
Okay. Okay, that's all.
Okay, uh, looking for a motion to approve the police report? I'll give that to Alter and Decker. Further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, Paul.
Opposed, abstentions, carries. Code enforcement report, Mark?
Motion approved. Hi.
Hey, do you, do you have a law enforcement church?
No. I don't know who I am.
She, she don't have a lot.
Yeah.
Oh, gee.
Yeah.
Good for him.
Mark, um, the only question, fifty-seven Center Street, I see you have, it's on here, it's red tags, it's uninhabitable, and it's, but it's been, it was bank owned then, now it's been purchased. So does that?
Still red tag.
Okay, no, that's, I'm just trying to understand, okay.
Is that Jack Molly?
What's that?
Jack Molly?
Yes. He's from Niski on.
I just sent him a letter, he's supposed to, he, let me know when he's gonna be up there and do a boxer together on.
Oh, he was up, he was up here, he was up here, uh, Friday.
Oh, gee.
Yeah. Okay, no, I just, just wondering about, because I know he's been over there working and, uh, just making progress, that's all.
Uh, yeah, he should be, yeah, he's always in there.
Give you a call?
Give you a call.
All right, okay.
Cause obviously he's not gonna be.
Okay, no problem.
I have a question for Elena on our, uh, inspector's report. We have two people, it's been quite a long time, they have bench warrants issued for them, for Doug and Peter. Anything you can do about that other than have?
Nothing.
You just have to wait for the, for them to get it, and then.
As far as, like, actually having them appear, is that what you mean? Not, you know, like going in and doing the work?
No.
No, no, they have bench warrants issued for both of them, yeah.
I mean, we have, I.
We only have the authority within our jurisdiction, right?
So they have code issues in their house or nothing, you can do about that?
Well, that's where I was going with the second question. There's one thing, you know, there's a question of what can we do to bring them to court? But then there's a second question, if there are certain pro violations that continue to exist, can the village come in and correct them potentially and build them to the tax roll, is that what you're asking?
No, I just wonder, is any, any other legal options for?
Cause that's a potential.
Well, I was, I, I like that, you're, you're fine, Paul.
Well, one of them, one of them is a, is a, uh, commercial property that's, uh, rental property. So do we have any leverage as far as, uh, evicting the, you know, condemning the building and evicting the tenants? Is that an option?
I don't know if the violations rise to the level of condemning.
We, yeah, condemning is not over.
I shouldn't say condemning, but eviction, so you can, he starts to, so the landlord loses revenue, so that forces him to come to court to get the things done.
So who use, uh, for ours has been a cap.
That's what I'm talking about.
That, uh, issue there is that, uh, every two years, he's required to have a whole apartment house inspection, which he's failed to do, and he just, uh, he's not gonna do it. And so that's why we have a warrant out for him. Uh, at some point, yeah, I don't, I'm not sure if we can just, you know, contact the tenants, or, or what are we supposed to do? I, I don't know if there's either a provision.
Number three.
That allows us to take the next step, to shut the building down, or somehow you gotta be able to get this guy, he's just, he's just not.
Yeah, that's common town.
So there, there, in my current system, there has to be somewhere along the lines, a line where you can actually shut the building down. Let's just say, for example, I'll use an extreme example, we have a situation where the exhaust or the boiler is entering, emptying directly into the building, right? It, that's, that's an extreme example, but somewhere between that and, and not putting extra screw in the handrail on the other, there has to be a line somewhere where we can actually do something actionable, right? And mine.
So he just won't let you inspect?
Well, I think.
So without being able to inspect it, how do we know that there's smoke detectors? How do we know that there's any of this stuff?
We don't, we don't, if the building burns down tomorrow, uh, you know, it was, uh, it was that fall, you know, these, um, three years.
Going that's connected to three other buildings too, so. Putting jeopardy, smoking problems.
Maybe you and I can get together and discuss what the actual violations are and if we can look at.
Actual violation, if he hasn't let us in to do the inspection.
We have a local law.
There's a second one though, too, right? There's two that have been.
There's Marshals on fifty-nine, uh, Church Street, which we just fixed the roof on this recent.
Yeah, we paid the.
And we did that.
Marshals, Marshals, we can separate.
Yeah. So going back to the first one, we have a local law in place that dictates and requir, that requires various inspections that have to be done by Mark. Off the top of my head, I don't know if that law includes consequences for if that doesn't happen.
It includes fines, and, you know, I guess the fines can be daily fines, but if he's just, you know, he's not.
Somebody sent me the local law.
Can you send her that local law that you're talking about? Okay.
And is there, if it isn't, sorry, if it's not, if it's not, uh, something that's overly unfortunate, then I think we need to rewrite these laws, we have.
Right, that's what we're talking about.
That's, yup, that's exactly what we're talking about.
We have too many dead meat chuckles around this place, and with landlords that live in, I, it, throw, throw a dart at the, whoa, I, I don't know where they live, we track some down, as we always say.
Most landlords are cooperative.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
And I'm seeing over the years, you know, the years now, so I'm seeing where most of them know what they, in fact, they know what I'm looking for. They, you know, in most cases, some buildings are in better condition than other buildings. You know, and that's not necessarily old buildings, or else they have COVID issues, or just, when they were originally put together as apartments, they just weren't done for.
What if the residents, the tenants complained?
There's a tenant's bill of rights.
Tenants can lighten it, yeah, and I can do an inspection.
Cause you've, you've had to do that before, you've acted on that.
Oh, I didn't thought of that, 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 no, I do that.
Yup.
You're probably, I'm saying for situations like what Marcus is talking about, where the guy won't even let us in the building, clearly we have a law, we have an inspection process, uh, you know, there should be some pretty, a, a, a daily fine or whatever. I just need to see us end up in a situation, you know, if you guys remember, ten, twelve years ago, in Ballton, I, I remember, massive apartment building burned down across from City Hall in San Francisco, J Street or whatever, and heads roll for that, because no one had done like inspections of like, like, uh,
part of the problem was he had done an inspection.
What then?
He had done an inspection and passed the alarm system.
Oh, and they, well, and the alarm system wasn't working. But when you have, but my, my point being though, when you have situations like that, heads roll, I mean, that's.
Yeah.
It's just bad, you know, and, uh.
I mean, I could start with some, I don't know any of the tenants in the building. I could send letters just to apartment one, apartment two, you know, tell them the fairytale violation, because the law does say it's also a tenant's responsibility.
I mean, there's one, a ground floor one, which is downtown commercial, should have been an apartment.
Well, then it's hard to remember since I was there.
I don't think so, for a while there was, it was totally empty until, until he bought the property.
He, yeah, he don't get since I've been here.
I know, it's not.
And it's ended with his brother.
Right, but downtown commercials, the first floor isn't supposed to be, uh, apartments.
I'm not aware of that.
Elena, you had a question?
I don't really have a question, I have a comment. I think the way we will see with this is if I can get the local law, I can take a look at that and see what remedies, if any, we have in there. Potentially what we need to do is revisit that local law and make the penalties more strict or give us more options going forward.
Yup.
I have had situations in which I've had our building inspectors apply to our local justice for an administrative search warrant to do just that, inspection, take pictures, um, especially if it's per pover, it's not, not allowing us in. So I can, once I have the code, I can kind of look into that and see if that's a potential, um, for something that we could do as well.
They do that in town, Brunswick, they get administrative search warrants. Can you publish, can we put their face on their website? On the posters? Honestly, I think the solution is to make it, to, to redress the law, whatever, to make some pretty severe penalties, and then when we have a situation like what Marcus is driving, where the guy, knowing he knows that he has to let us in, if he won't, you're likely to see massive fines against him, and as they say, sometimes you gotta shoot a hostage, and then everybody else.
In certain circumstances, you can actually make it a crime too, so that's why I say it might be with wild.
Yeah, sometimes you gotta shoot a hostage, and everybody else is like, whoa.
Make it stiffer, the, the better.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Make it stiffer, the better.
Yeah, and then everybody else is like, whoa, you see what they did with someone, and you refuse to let them in, it's still going awful.
Yup, no.
And as we're talking local law development, I would love to, uh, have some trustees set up, uh, maybe a time, either maybe via Zoom or right in person, to sit for a couple of hours and start talking through the local laws, because we've been talking about things we want to develop.
I gave all my blinders to general.
Yes, they're in the middle of being copied, they're all over the place in there. Um, but, I know we wanna move on a lot of these local laws. I think through email, we schedule times, find times to sit down for a couple of hours and do it.
I still need a lot of local laws.
Yes, we're.
That would be the first step, and if I can get that, then I can kind of just look through some of that and see where we can get some improvement.
Yup, perfect, perfect.
That being said, I'll make the motion to approve the building code enforcement office.
All right, so motion made by Ryan, second by Decker, all in favor?
Aye.
Poser extensions, carries, that was the best eye I've heard all six years of mayor. Treasures report, anything you guys wanna note?
Motion approved, second.
Shuddig and Decker again, uh, motion approved treasure report, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, poser extensions? Carries, clerk deputy clerk report.
Aye.
You have to make the motion.
Make the motion, acceptors presented.
All right, I need a second. Ryan and Decker again, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Poser extensions? Carrie, sorry Marie, if you wanted to speak up there, I don't know if you're listening.
She probably fell asleep.
All right, highway department report.
I'm losing some of my bedtime, but I, I went here.
Uh, thank you Marie, God bless you, I know, riveting. Um, Kenny had to go, uh, to the school to be with his, uh, son for a meeting, um, anything you guys wanna, uh, ask about there?
I, uh, well, you and I have a bit about Woodstock, but that.
Yes.
I have not the candidacy over that grant. So how bad the dump truck is. And, you know, we, Denise is looking in though, but we have this excavator, a hundred thirty thousand dollars, it sits there, it's done. Plan would be if we can sell it at this moment, there's money to be in dump truck.
Well, it won't be all of our money.
Well, no, Kenny's been looking, we might be getting a hundred fifteen thousand dollars out of it.
I.
So Elena, we ended up with a, yeah.
For what I'm seeing is the municipalities are getting a lot more money than they otherwise normally would right now.
Right now?
We sell right now.
As a board, if we decide, like, what do we have to do is procedurally to?
Resolution or motion to surplus, whatever we want to surplus.
Do they have to be a bid?
To purchase or to sell?
To sell.
We want to sell.
No, you don't have to, you will, the idea is you do have to get, try to get the most money out of, you know, so you can get.
Can you put them in one bid?
I don't know the answer to that, because I'm not actually usually involved with that portion of it, but I can find out for you.
Right, because, I mean, we don't wanna sell it for any.
No, we want to keep out of reserve money now, like.
Right, we wanna make sure that we, that we, you know, make money.
Stay in contact with somebody.
We won't accept that.
It's a great shake.
I know.
Send it to me.
Okay.
It's a great shake.
It sounds like we need to get the bids and, or get prices from people who are interested and bring that to a meeting and via resolution, do that.
No, you do a resolution or motion to actually approve the surplus and then the process takes place after that and you just accept whatever.
And there's something about.
I mean, if you're gonna set parameters, you can do that, but.
Something about it with Bob and Grant, and we have to make sure we can sell it as a part of.
It was not bought as a grant, it was bought intended to.
For each of you to look and see what you sell.
It was the Woods Brook money, is what the, wasn't it?
Nope.
Yes, it was.
Yes, it was.
And we bought it, we bought it in.
In anticipation of knocking houses down.
But we, no, we didn't buy it with Woods Brook grant money, we brought it so that our guys could do the.
Right, but that's, we bought it with anticipation of Woods, I don't know where the grant.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't with Woods Brook money, we did it with village money.
I don't think so. I'm pretty sure you don't own the Woods Brook grant, because why would we lie, misconduct?
I thought, I think Kevin's right. I might be wrong, but I, I think so too.
But either way, Denise had said something Kenny, Kenny, I'm looking, he probably ran out of that. She wants to find out if we can sell it, he had something about a certain amount of time after we bought it.
I got you.
The other money's bought, I don't know.
So if we, if we make this motion to surplus it and we decide we're gonna put it out for sale, we, can't we also write in there that nothing compels us to actually actually keep a sale once a bid? In other words, we can look at the bids, if we don't like it, we can decide not to sell it?
I think that that would depend on the process that's utilized, if it's like a certain website or something, you know what I mean? If you're putting up a website, they, they would probably have their own rules, so. I have something that I can put you guys in contact with that can probably answer those.
Okay.
I think at this point, we need to do a little bit of work to figure out where the last grant came from.
We, I think we all agree that it's a great idea, but we probably, we get the groundwork set up for and go forward.
Kenny, Kenny does a good job, but also he said the law of vans.
I, I asked him before the meeting, I mean, it'll hopefully be done this week.
Yeah, and I, I love, right, okay.
Probably save us a ton of money.
Yep, absolutely. All right, um.
Any other thing that?
Anything else with, uh, highway? All right.
Oh, well, we will be able to start looking into a five or ten year plan in that department as well.
Oh, right.
Look into the future, if something you're gonna need, we might have a way out of this dump truck.
Mm-hmm.
Cause we haven't, we haven't bought new dump trucks since two thousand eight.
Right, and, they don't have a lot of miles, but they have a lot.
Fred Flintstone could drive the trucks pretty quick.
That's right.
Cause your feet are.
Greg's speed goes afloat, our frame is fully covered.
Frame rock cancer.
And I'm starting to look like that.
Yeah, I, I know, I've seen him.
Yeah, the wafery, that's what.
Oh, yeah, the deaminase.
But I think that's a way out there, and then I think, start making these plans and look down, you know, where we're too reactive, so. And I think it's very complex, and now we got a new superintendent who's dumb now, he's a worker.
Absolutely.
But that's, you know, it's hard, maybe we can use some expertise of other people, maybe.
It would, it would.
Oh, you know some stuff, help us, you know.
We gotta provide them the tools to be, to be successful.
And he's a young guy.
All right, so we have direction on this, make sure that we follow up on this in over the next week or two, please.
Elena's gonna send an email to you and I.
Perfect. All right, um, looking for a motion to approve, unless there's anything else.
I'll make it.
All right. Um, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or extensions? All right, uh, Marie, that was, uh, Decker and Shuddig for the, uh, highway, uh, reports. Uh, sewer report, anything else you guys wanna note?
No, motion approved, second.
Uh, Shuddig and Decker, all in favor?
Aye.
Poser extensions, carries and water reports.
My friend is, uh, Josh and, uh, Jim, they wanted me to.
Mm-hmm.
That place is clean, those guys, Harry was impressed, Josh was impressed, Harry impressed. No, we went to the tour and I saw a lot of grounds in there rusted, corroded, and we all.
Yep.
Some of that stuff's why everybody has to adjust it, they, they said he used half the ice, I said we take, we look at whoever's shooting, but, you know, there's no loyalty. We have a couple of different companies around here, so.
Depending on how much it is, we put it out for bid anyway, so.
Right.
Yes.
But there is a couple of things unfortunately in that department, gonna have to be addressed pretty soon, we got four disconnect boxes that rusted.
Well, dehumidifier is the big issue, it's gotta be, we know that.
A lot of it can be done just with the proper class, uh, you know, you don't put a, it's, it's weatherproof boxes that are needed, but they have all, you know, interior.
Corrosion resistance.
Corrosion, some of those, you don't need it to be a dehumidifier, in that case we probably do. There's some sensitive electronics shut, we, we want it locked.
They probably want halfway, because I think Hathaway was the one who did the work, the electric work on that.
I mean, you know, there's a master electrician, a master electrician, so, but I love Shane, and he might end up being the one to do it anyways.
No.
And, you know, I wish Jamie, Jamie, uh, oh, he did, I mean.
But they all have to, they gotta follow, they gotta wait.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
And they're, both of those companies are really good, so here you are there about just to bring that to where, not trying to get that done right away. There might be, the disconnects might have to be done right away, because they're a danger.
All right.
So, we're just hoping that, but I was glad they got me, I was a little disappointed they were using their own vehicles for the last, uh, month and a half, two months.
I didn't know. I didn't know.
Where would they get the gas? I mean, a lot, you know, they're using their own fuel, they drive over their own personal vehicles around, or they use.
They're submitting mileage.
Huh?
Submitting mileage.
Have they had?
Yes.
Good.
Well, I.
They were told to.
Whether or not they do.
They were told to get the.
All right.
No, I'm just saying they were told to, to submit, submit for mileage.
Yeah, they deserve some.
Yep. Anything else for water?
They did, no, I was, they're motion.
Anything else for water? Need a motion for water?
I'll make it.
Second.
Thank you, Decker and Ryan, for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Poser extensions, carries, minutes, uh, unless there's anything that needs to be changed in the February eighth, regular minute, meeting minutes. I will take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second is presented.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Decker, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or extensions? Carries, uh, what about the February twenty eighth special meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Ryan makes the motion again.
I think Jeff said second.
Second.
There you go, all right, we subbed in there, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, poser extensions, carries. Trustee committee reports, we'll start with Bobby and just go right through to Kevin.
Um, not much to add, just the only thing I, still working with real term energy, um, we're trying to get the things nailed down as far as, uh, the lighting fixtures that we agree upon, that we agreed upon. The other question that I have for Elena, did you, I think I sent that copy, did I send the copy of that to you? The, they, they asked for a, um.
Although.
The letter of intent from, uh, saying that we're gonna pay for the National Grid. National Grid's requiring us to submit a letter of, uh, a, a letter of credit for like a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Cause that would be the cost of our buyout cost of the light fixtures, um, and.
He sent it to me yesterday.
Yeah, Denise said, she brought it to our bond council, and said they'd never see anything like it. So they sent, so they sent me a, a copy, that's why I sent that to you, cause it's, so. We need to see what, if national, what we need to get to make National Grid happy so we can proceed to get. Because that, what the letter says, we have, we'll complete the project within two years, and if not, we forfeit the hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars.
That's a good, uh, eleven, ten, fifteen, twenty year plan.
Right. Right, so that's the only thing that I have, just, uh. We're working on that and I'll, I've been dealing with her, Kevin and Rob, and so we're making progress. But that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Kevin.
Working on the parking study, we have one proposal that I shared with you, and, uh, another person called back today and said that they were interested in submitting proposals too, so.
Good.
I'll send them the information tomorrow.
Great, okay.
And, and working off of that, just, uh, do you wanna fini- finish on?
All, almost all of them so far, then right around the same number.
Okay.
Like ten to twelve, or fif- ten to fifteen, something like that.
They didn't know what the cost was for the previous proposal, so it's been a couple thousand dollars.
Elena, one of the things I, I wanna prioritize reviewing for the April meeting is the procurement policy and get your take on that. Because as an example, with Kevin's, uh, thing or with some of the repairs, because everything is going up and may, we may wanna look at what the numbers are that require us to do bids versus not bids and that sort of thing. Um, but also, you know, since you're an attorney of another municipality, I'd be interested in what your take is on our procurement policy. Not much has changed from the procurement policy that was in place when I started in twenty seventeen, except we just kinda brought costs up a little bit that triggered the various levels of, we don't need a bid, or we do need official bids, that sort of thing. But I would like to just re- review that because at the April organization meeting, that's one of the things that we, uh, solidify for the year. All right. Um, Cat, you have anything else? Thank you. Deb?
Okay, I've been in touch with Erxwala.
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 Um, and, uh, I walked up with that girl, you updated the stuff that's gonna happen, um, and I already told Kenny, um, we have to do something new for our electronics recycling, because the old company's not doing it anymore. So we need to find a new company or a new way of doing it. And so, and then also they want their shed bank, but.
Want their what?
Mac, the shed, and we could do electronics in it.
I don't think we have a shed, I think you should send a.
No, there's a grid shut up there for the electronics.
It's, it's like a, it's like a, it's like a metal tanker.
Container.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, they want.
Okay. Okay.
Whatever it is, they want a back, unless, um, Mac's trying to direct it and buy it from them.
Do you hear that, Kenny?
Yes, so, I mean, we could look into another company, I don't know if that's something that Matt is working on.
Yeah, work, yeah, you, probably we should do a call with that or something, but he, um, he says you're looking into a new company, because there are other communities that.
Okay.
Are losing it too, so.
The, the county's doing an electronics recycling thing, uh, upcoming.
Is it occasionally, so are they all kind of?
Problems at, at Troy, so it's gonna hurt all your stuff at Troy.
Yeah, with, this, this bin that you have up there now has been full for weeks, so Chuck's just throwing the electronics on the pad and getting crushed and going in the dumpster, which is wasting money, because.
We're paying all that way, right.
We're paying it all that way, whereas the recycling thing, I think they just come and take it, I, I think.
Should we put a hold on, on accepting electronics?
That's entirely up to you, I mean, I don't think there's that much, maybe a couple TVs a weekend, I mean, and when you're, when you're really crushing down.
It's not an empty lot at the end of my street.
I mean, with, when you're really crushing down, you know, what are they, five pounds down, these TVs, you can smash them all that long.
Yeah.
With a bucket of them, so.
All right, well, in, in, while we're talking about that, and we really should look into the aspect of working out an agreement with the town to see about, uh, a, a contribution for the, the stuff that's going to the transfer station, because.
Denise gave me some figures for that, but I have to find them.
Right. And, and I know that the town's receptive to that, so.
Either that or change the rates, you know, I think.
Well, I think we need to change the rate, I think we need to look at the whole picture, we need to change the rates and try to.
It's been on the agenda since two years ago.
What's that, change rates?
Well, it's kind of, it's kind of been a little bit my problem too, because I, I did talk to Denise about.
So, we've, we've talked about this at length before with other boards and the best, the best way to take care of the private transport stations is get a set of scales and you weigh it, reload it, you charge them by the.
Yes, because scales are so expensive.
So expensive.
If you can get a set of portable scales for a few thousand dollars, you know, I know it's, it's still a lot of money, but, and I think in the long run, that will save you, it's funny to me, because, because, you know, half the time you're paying a tipping fee on these dumpsters and it's like half full of styrofoam, and then maybe it's half full of shingles, and shingles are heavy. And you get truck full of shingles and dump truck full of shingles, and you're charging, you're measuring the load, you're not charging them by the weight, you're charging them by the size of the load.
Well, Chuck has an idea kind of in his mind, because that's.
Yeah, he does, but we're still, you, the, the way it was when I was up there, you would measure, and you, there was a formula you'd multiply them time.
It's old, it's an old system that doesn't really work anymore.
And so, I mean, if you come in with a dump, a dump truck full of styrofoam or a dump truck full of styrofoams, you're gonna say, you're gonna pay the same price.
Yeah.
That's another conversation we can have with Matt, because he, he could help us kind of first, that's a good second. Um, I, I used one.
Yeah, I mean, like, look, it's, you know, you're, you're charging the same price for a load, a pickup truck full of styrofoams is worth it, a truck full of styrofoams, because you're measuring the load.
And then the maximum, I think, is sixty bucks, right?
I, I, I couldn't tell.
Yeah, it, it is, and I can tell you, my father, um, before, in my project, or your garbage, you know, construction, I mean, he's a, oh, a half a colony charge. I pay a couple of hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars for this or whatever, I mean, and you're paying like four and a half.
So, man, we can look at the, the, what we charge and everything for inside.
Are there a couple trustees that wanna sit down with, uh, Kenny?
Yeah, I do have to, and, and we can get that, we have to come for that one, sir.
Great, anybody else wanna hop in that?
Do you, do you have a smaller scale?
I think so, yeah, I mean, I, I pressed them years ago, because we talked about them many years ago, like, set up portable scales, you know, with the goal, and you gotta try and get a level, get them out of rental area. And, I mean, they're not as accurate as they would be if you brought in, you know, a big fancy setup like Brown else had, some junk or something like that. But they'll give you a, a lot better idea of what, you know, then, you know, but I could, you know, I could check it out, I could, I could do some research on it and see it.
Please do.
That'd be great, Kenny.
I'm doing, you wouldn't need to weigh them, like, you can come in and just come with bags, but aren't you sure?
No, yeah, so we're talking about people, the, the trash bags, um, there's a set price for the trash bags.
Right.
I think they're two or three bucks for one size, you know, for like a, a contractor bag, it's like five to ten bucks or something like that. You know, in refrigerators, they, you know, are charged, they're charged by the refrigerator, I think it's maybe twenty to thirty bucks. And like the tires, they charge five bucks a piece, so you wouldn't have to weigh that stuff, but it's, you know, it's the construct, the construction, the C and D.
It wouldn't be hard to have a policy, it just says if materials are looking to weigh or exceed like, you know, twenty pounds or forty pounds, and.
I mean.
It's subject to a different, yeah.
But, you know, you gotta, you gotta leave, you gotta leave it on, you gotta get Chuck to accept the change too.
Huh, yeah.
Um, the other thing, the other thing is that, um, they're starting with, um, more paint collection programs, I know that they have them every once in a while, but we could have one if we want one, um, at our transport stations. Just somebody to be, um, trained to, you know, know how to mo- mo- um, monitor it and, you know, know what's what and things like that.
Okay.
With the materials, so I, I think people will really like that.
I mean, I.
If one of lost us anything.
I don't think, I don't think it's necessary for every week, but we could do maybe of, I don't know, three months or every six months.
Quarterly, yeah, quarterly or six months would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, I think they set one up and see, see.
We, we passed it there before, years ago, we've done their courses.
Paint.
Yeah, paint matters.
It was a year ago.
Paint would be fantastic, if we could do it, one in like.
Well, yes, we can have it for, for all of them.
Yeah, I know.
Honestly, like mid-spring and like early fall, that's perfect, because that's, that's the season.
I can honestly tell you, I've gone up to the transport station, cleaned it up and loaded it many times, and people just throw it in black trash bags, you know, thanks, you can see it's.
Yep.
Run over it and it explodes and there's paint everywhere, all over the road, so.
Yep. Yep. Deb, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, just that, um, I, I, I would like to, um, you know, go over a lot of the laws there for, for, um, what I mean, I think there's a lot of revisions that we need to, yeah, and everything.
Absolutely.
Well, they have to also be ordered.
We have laws for hitting skateboards in the building or whatever, I mean, from like nineteen eighty-six.
Oh, you have something, so we just, we need somebody to, we need to.
They do all that.
I, so we just give them everything and they sort it out?
Yes.
We're like, I'm gonna charge us a bunch of money.
Yes.
How, how, what does that cost typically to have a little codex?
It's not cheap.
What are we talking about, ordinances?
Yeah, you have it all codexed, like a lot of the municipalities use that ECO three sixty or whatever it was, three sixty.
We have that for just our zoning plan, that was part of the B and L work that they did as to get that online, but that's all, like, P, uh, not, is it? Oh, hold on, there's a municipality locally, it may be Petersburg. No, it's not, give me a minute, I'll think of it, there's a mi- there's a local small municipality that's got like everything online, and I was like, oh my gosh, how did they do that?
A lot of them do now.
Well, there's nothing else to do in Petersburg, so.
There you go, there you go, I don't think it's Petersburg, I'm gonna figure this out in a second.
Anyway, um.
Check in so cross the road after two in the morning.
I think that would help a lot of bringing people and business, I mean, you can't, you can't look stuff up, you can't, it's nothing searchable. Because, I mean, it's all.
Posting kills.
Well, there's such a variety of.
Posting kills is the one I saw.
Variance of laws, I mean, we need to get them.
Everything, boom, right there.
Well, some of our laws, take it back to eighteen hundred.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
So, the, the only other thing I have something to do with committee thing, but I think it's gonna be, um, with the village, whatever, is, uh, uh, a person, but we're actually taking out a, a green, or refugee family.
Just heard about this at school, I didn't realize that was you guys doing it.
Yeah, it's taking in a family.
Awesome.
Oh, that's so cool.
Yeah, it's a mother, father, and a full-term dear son, which is the same age as, as mine, they, um, it's all through welcome dot U S, which is the, so they're all vetted, like, we have copies of passports, I mean, so we're not. Buying ourselves a Nigerian prince for five thousand dollars or whatever.
Welcome dot U S.
Welcome dot U S, yeah, so, um, we're hoping to, assuming they have a fixed date, they're coming in, taking some heat in, um, and we'll be looking for some help, like maybe fundraisers and stuff, because. These people have fled twice, they're from the next city, which is by Russian border, they fled Kiev in two thousand fourteen, then they fled again, this time they have a car and four suitcases.
Oh my gosh.
Fourteen-year-old was able to grab his PlayStation, and that's what they have. Uh, and these are well-educated people, she has a master's in accounting and stuff, they're, they're very nice people, we met with them Sunday via Zoom in the UK, and they're wonderful people, it's, it's, uh, kinda heartbreaking to watch adults. I hate to use the word grumble, but we know they're like.
Yep.
You know, to, to basically ask for help from someone you don't even know. But anyway, we're gonna, the deal is you take them to your house and they're on their feet, and, uh, find them a place to stay and help them get jobs and, um. There's a lot of things that they don't understand about America, like they have credit scores and, and if you know anything about a lot of European countries, it's like, if I want a twenty thousand dollar car, then I save my money to buy a twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And we'll do that, we buy it, and we figure out a pay for it later, right, so, they have nothing, they're coming over with four suitcases and a PlayStation, so, um. Yeah, so I'm hoping to get to like a go fund, meet some fundraisers and, we did let this volunteer, Mr. Hall, know, and they said that we're gonna bring them up to this staff. I mean, the, the student does speak pretty good English, he's in school in the UK.
Okay.
And he's quite smart.
I have inside information that it was brought up.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's great though, yeah, that's awesome.
Um, I have an organization that I wanna put you in touch with, a local, um, uh, singing group who's been very prevalent in Ukraine, Ukrainian type things, so I think they would jump to support this.
And so, and I talked to Grant too, and I said, you know, it's not just money, it's also like, it means a physical to get into school.
Healthcare.
The government's not accepting any patients, we're gonna need physical to get into school. Now, thankfully, Dr. Peacock said, you, it doesn't matter what we're doing, Ukrainian family, I will figure it out, if I have to come forward, take it as like my, a patient in time, you know, in private practice, I'll do it. But that's out of their own concern, he's gonna talk to, um, I think it's Tom D or whatever.
Yeah, Tom D's the hospital.
Tom D, but there's, there's, this is a whole thing, um, you know, so, anyway, that, I thought that was.
I gotta go.
Um.
I got my part of the transportation.
See, yeah.
Anything you wanna pass on for agenda stuff?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think it's good for the village, you know, plus, I mean, I don't think there's any, but, just the village yet, so, or anywhere around it, but if you wanna come here, we're gonna take it.
Good for you. All right, thank you.
Maybe you'll want it.
Sweet.
I have a couple things, um, Ian and I both met with these, to talk specifically about the water in the sewer. We make everyone aware that income to expense, we're in the red, two seventy-five, five seventy-six point twenty-four in the water, two eleven eight ninety-five point six in the sewer. And I've been running numbers, I have a spreadsheet, and here's an example, let's say, cut the rates five point oh nine per thousand, kept every other rate the same. We just added across the board, twenty-dollar maintenance charge, that's fifty-five thousand, just in residential, added revenue. And she didn't change the rate, now, everyone's got, we're gonna talk about this for quite a while, it's one way, no, I'm working on it, trying to pull up the scenarios, it's not gonna kill me, because this is gonna be a five-year plan. There's no other way around it, I'm, I'm all for what we said with Arco, and now that brings me to the parking study. I think we can find a way to do that in general funding, and I'll be passing out things that I, and, let's break it up, I'm just trying to run numbers, trying to go through things, we need to make that smart.
And we will, yeah. That was a valuable one, that could do, it's not good, I mean, I did, I did a quick math based on our, our costs and what our deficit is and, and also, I'm, I'm not an accountant by any means, but. When I ran the numbers and worked it, like, even, we have to be, we have to be a quarter, it's seventy-eight percent, okay, it, it's not possible, so we have to do something.
I mean, even if I went with flat twenty-five dollars, maintenance, I mean, face, we gotta make, make those flights, like, put a flat, we got around a hundred thousand dollars, you know, all the way across the board, you know, I'm not. Maintenance charge would be different for, you know, it's all, whether it's out of town or industrial or this and that, but I would just throw it out there quick in the spreadsheet.
Right.
You know, I mean, for some, I, you know, I heard another idea where we, we do that for the people that aren't using it, we set a number, and if they're smart, they just let the broad run on the ground, pay fifty dollars for ten thousand gallons, like that. You gotta have a maintenance charge, if you're gonna have one, that's the route we take, you gotta go across the board, so nothing all that lies.
You can't have exceptions.
You're gonna charge somebody that doesn't use water, they don't pay the maintenance fee, but everyone else isn't.
How can they not be using water?
Well, we got eighty-eight people that are zero.
Disconnected, but my.
Oh, because the houses are uninhabited.
They're, yeah, they're disconnected, well, they're shut off, whatever, but it's, we have to. We still have to maintain the line running past the street, we, there's still a infrastructure that has to be maintained, if, if I pay, if I pay the village two hundred dollars to turn my water out, it doesn't cost two hundred dollars to run.
Because these people have neighbors, it's not like, you know, we have, we, but, you know. I think you can't just say, oh, let's charge them money, the maintenance, we're leaving a couple, we just throw money at them and then everyone else.
Oh.
You can't, and we're, you know, or then you'll say, well, we're gonna raise the rates, yeah, and I'm gonna, and then it just doesn't work. Again, they have a whole board, you know, we can talk about it, but just quickly, I've been running numbers with the spreadsheet, you know, that I've got. And I've just played a present report with a bunch of different scenarios like I did last year and see what we can do, but it's gonna be five to ten years on the plan. And when you charge twenty, and our maintenance, we really don't bring rates up, it's still made up, maybe it has something in the top of the chart support. Maintenance charge is gonna be different, per water usage, per out of town, industrial, road we're casing deep, but, uh, like I said, Arco, we have our plan. So we're going to start to go out there, can't continue to run.
No, we, we can't, we can't.
It's nobody's fault.
We can't put the finger in the dyke with the, with the Arco funds either.
Yeah.
You know, we can't just keep patching up our deficits.
Then that's the last one, I mean.
Right, we're not getting any more Arco money, right, so you're right, we gotta have a plan.
That's user to, come close, and you know how I feel, and you agree about, you know, our lawyer would be a full idea, and I have no intention of accepting any of it, unless we get the.
Well, hold, well, these are things we're not gonna be discussing in public session.
Something, no.
Because.
They deserve to know.
Hmm, it's a little more complicated than that.
That's not.
I'll, I'll make, I'll make a general statement, you know, this, Bobby and I talked, and in the end, we, we need this, you know, life of the village to come out this evening.
Oh, we, we, we've been saying that for, for five years.
Yeah, that's, that's nothing.
Well, getting, getting back, setting this at the table, why don't you shoot for me, for me, I, I just, I'm.
It's not that it's a secret, it's that these are large discussions with a lot of pieces, and there are, there is another side. Across the table from the village and the companies, we have to be ve- but we have to be very specific and strategic about what things we say, and more specifically, what things we don't say, because we don't want to do. Anything that will screw up those discussions happening at the table, which by law are not going to be public things. And also, it's, it's a little weird to be discussing things like this without our attorney here also.
Again, I'll just, just, we need to, we need, we need to make, we need to make over, I mean, that's all. And if, uh, getting back to the water, I remember we were, and I've said this before, that our water rates should be a parity with our production costs. Like, we're not, we're in the water business, we're not, we're not a for-profit business, like, if it costs five dollars per thousand ounce, we can charge five dollars per thousand ounce, we just, we just need to work even, and.
We're already one of the highest, I have a spreadsheet of every community, town, village, and state, just got it, we are amongst the highest, at one million per thousand, or per thousand.
Now, I, I'm betting you some of that to some degree is economy of scale, we have, we have.
The president's saying that.
Right, we, I'm gonna Josh, we have capacity for, to basically, this water plant can pump out twice as much water, um, with the same plant, or another million gallons a day, or some astronaut, so there is an economy of scale, we added. Two, three hundred more houses onto the village, we can operate with almost the same cost, so there, there's an economy of scale.
Hard to get people coming, you know.
Yeah, we also br- had an industry that we used to generate their revenue.
And that may be part of why we have the additional capacity.
That is why, that is definitely why.
New recollection.
Right, that may, that may add more capacity, why we have so much spare capacity.
People walk away and no more, and without, of the industry, and that water usage goes out the window, the, the debt, the money's gotta come from somewhere, the same amount of water's being used by the residents.
We, we can't run a water.
They dropped a ton of usage.
We can't run a water department anyway, we just can't, so, and we're buried in a little hole now, and we're gonna have to come up with a plan to, 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 to raise the rates enough to get us, ourselves a parity, or come up with some other method of settling water, or whatever.
Yep.
You guys saw the Cambridge wrote it down in the sewer system.
That was.
Let me, yeah, well, not that, not that, I wanna belabor that point, but how, how can they do the, is, so apparently it's, it wasn't a D E C mandate, or was it?
No, apparently not.
How can that?
They got a grant, I, I just gotta say it's close to seven hundred something, seventy tanks, helping to buy a dairy about the half square, half a square mile, and the tomatoes must grow crazy there, garden, whatever, but. I, but I'm, why they're not required to, I have no idea, but, uh, they're not.
The grant, they got the grant based on the fact that they were gonna do that, right?
The, the initiative they showed and.
One of the grants, yeah, that was a USD rule, I think.
Well, I've been part of it, I've been part of it, you know, or part of the reason they got the other.
New York forward.
Because they, you know, getting the sewer system in there, there's only so far the village can ever grow without having.
Yep. Yep.
Called water sewer infrastructure, they've got, as I understand it, some private water company that you can buy into if you want to. And no centralized septic or sewer system at all, it's all septic tanks, which is just incredulous to me, but regardless, that's their decision up there, um, but you saw, I mean. The cost of the village, that village is about half the size of us, right, population-wise.
Uh, yeah, two thirds.
It's like eighteen hundred people or something like that, you know, my chance, I mean, people in Cambridge? I think it's my head, I don't know how you're being here. Okay, yeah, so it's exactly, it was exactly half the size, so you can see the economy of scale thing there, and now, if they had thirty hundred people, they probably could get a thousand dollars a year to do their water, probably, and maybe seven hundred something, whatever, you know. You, you probably don't need a whole lot more personnel in this water department, you probably don't need much bigger plant, you know, it's like, but it is what it is.
All right, anything else? Well, that was Bobby Decker, anything else? All right. Zooming on, I had the parking study, but Kevin already mentioned it, I kinda added this in because of the parking study discussion, but it sounds like we're already done with that, so, you're okay, I'm just gonna move on to new business? All right, uh, first thing, um, I meant to jump to this when Robert was here and I forgot about this, um, we had talked about getting, um. Let me step back a bit, um, Dan Merrill used to be connected to us, um, to allow our wastewater treatment plant to have the two A certification. He stepped down in January, uh, Kenny's been in touch with his D E C permit person, and she is fine with what's going on, but right now, um, until we have one or both of our guys to pass. The two A exam, which focuses on a bunch of stuff that doesn't apply to us, go team, um, we need someone tied to the village, uh, that has the two A license, he has like four.
Four.
Four A, something ridiculous, um, so, um, we talked and came up with a, an agreement and a price to bring Robert Flores here. The arrangement that we have set up, uh, in this agreement, and thank you Elena for helping with this, would bring Robert Flores here once every two weeks for four hours, which is the requirement for the state. Um, and he would not only work in the wastewater treatment plant, uh, and help out as needed, he would also be there as a knowledge base to help, uh, Kenny and Keith. With their preparation for the two A exam, uh, Keith is finishing his third class and final class in April. So, around May or June, that'll be the time when Kenny and Keith can go for their two A certification. So, um, we have prepared a quick, um, resolution here, and I'll, I'll quickly jump to the agreements, uh, but let me throw this up on the board. On the board, look at me, gosh, I don't even have boards anymore, um, resolution authorizing the village to enter in, into an independent contractor and professional services agreement. Whereas the village's wastewater treatment plant operator has advised that the village is in need of hiring individuals to provide consulting services as an independent contractor to the wastewater treatment plant operators. To assist with plant operations and provide services that will aid with the plant operators in preparing to obtain the wastewater treatment plant grade two A certifications. And whereas the individual providing the requested professional services must possess a wastewater treatment plant grade two A certification. And maintain sub-certi- uh, certification during the entirety of the agreement with the village, now therefore, be resolved by the board of trustees of the village, who falls in regular session as follows, one or only. That this board of trustees does hereby authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Robert Flores of Delaware Engineering D P C. Twenty-eight Madison Avenue Extension, Albany, New York, attached here to and made part of, uh, here of her professional consulting services. Relative to the village's wastewater treatment plant as more fully set forth in the attachment, made a part here of, the attachments. Is this agreement, which talks about the scope of services, and I'm gonna quickly summarize this, um, con- there's, uh, contractor responsibilities. The compensation, which is pretty much what we were paying Dan Merrill's at the time, is a, is a thousand dollars per month for them, for him to come down, and I think he's actually taking less than he normally does. To, 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 to take this on for us, um, uh, let's see here, contractor, I wanna skip to the details. Elena, is there anything else you wanna state about this agreement, or summarize in here, or point out?
Thanks, so I mean, we put the protections in there.
Yep.
Most likely not, it's not necessary, the termination is, we get the minimum of three months.
Yes.
In two weeks' notice, right?
Yeah.
Kenny, you hear that? Kenny, the agreement has a minimum of three months and, uh, two weeks' notice, and if in case either side wants to cancel it, so, once the test is passed, that's how we would sort of set that up. Um, uh, you know, I probably want me to go to the exhibit A. And then this is how we have the scope of work, it's as I explained earlier. So, um, there we go.
I will make a motion, authorize.
You gotta off, yeah, offer it, so Bobby Ryan is offering the resolution, I need the resolution seconded, thank you Deb, any further discussion? Uh, we haven't gotten there yet, any discussion yet?
Uh, yeah.
But I appreciate your positive support, all right, so this is, uh, the, um, resolution for, um, bringing in Flores, roll call vote, trustee shutting.
Me. Happy end.
Me.
Trustee O'Malley is now absent, trustee Alter.
Yes.
Uh, trustee Decker.
Yep.
Uh, trustee Walreid is not present, Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
And, uh, Mayor Allen is also a yes, so we are all set on that, thank you guys very much, I'm gonna minimize this for a moment, and get back to our regularly scheduled new business. Uh, remedial investigation feasibility study work plan, um, basically, whenever there's a property access agreement, the mayor has the authority to sign off on it, but I don't even. I can't remember if it's either required by state, village law, or just what we do, I always bring it to you guys for the authority to sign it. Um, I, let me bring up that PDF, I know I sent this to you guys, basically, this is part of the, um. The remedial investigation and feasibility study work that's being done at McCaffrey Street, this is not related to the record of decision, the new water sources, it's related to. What they're doing as, as part of their, uh, state mandated investigation, um, what's that?
That's what's good to me.
There you go, so it, it's, it's not a big deal, Kenny and I have already talked through it, um, they have a nice map of all the manholes. There you go. So it, it's, it's not a big deal. Kenny and I have already talked through it. Um, they have a nice map of all the manholes, which is fantastic and exciting and great to read. And actually, this was pretty, pretty neat. This ca- this is one of the things that came out of the um, them coming to meet is talking all the various directions of uh, where the sewer lines go and so on and so forth, so. Um, with that in mind, uh, am I looking for a, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the property owner access form with C T mail. Regarding access to manholes for collection wastewater samples, P F O S. Alright, that's trustee shutting and deputy mayor Ryan. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed or abstentions? Alright, carries, thank you. Alright, um, this request came from the, um, let me skip ahead a little bit. Uh, the Sutton and Brewster families. The very, very quick version of this is we have a lot of trees that are dying or dead in Wood Park and we need to. We're, I've already discussed getting together and talking through.
Yeah.
When to take them down and how we're gonna replace them, but there was a um, fountain over at Huzik Falls, when you walk up the breezeway into the high school, it's a small circular sort of fountain. It was put there back in the seventies as a uh, in memoriam tribute to Leslie Sutton, who had passed away in nineteen seventy-five. For whatever reason, the school is redoing that area and that is going to be either relocated or, or, or taken out. And they came to us and said, hey, I don't know if you're doing a tree project, but the, this family has financed uh, purchasing trees, they would just like to know if, and, and a bench, they have the financing for it. No, they're getting the tree donated probably from, from Dave Sutton, um, or from uh, Hyden or whatever, but they have mon- money for the bench and they just wanted a spot for it. We knew we were having trees come, uh, come down, so they reached out to go with myself and Kevin to bring this up. Um, do we, uh, what are your thoughts, by the way? Uh, this is the type of tree that they had mentioned. It looks like. The smaller version up there as a, as a young, as a young sapling or a young tree or whatever, and it grows to.
So it's a red maple?
Sort of that side. I forget the exact.
Yeah, I was, I mean, it's a Japanese red maple, I said, or something like that.
Yeah, I'm kinda frustrated, I don't have it here. I put it in the email, I know that, but, um, are you guys good with this plan?
You're gonna ask the group to pick up leaves off that thing?
Is that gonna have a few more leaves than our other trees?
It may.
There are more leaves in our dentures.
That's, that's true. We don't need to do anything formal on this, we can just kinda okay it and, or do.
Um, I would say a motion to accept the donation.
Okay. So, uh, looking for a motion to accept the donation in the future from Sutton Brewster families. For a new tree and bench to be placed in or near Wood Park in honor of Leslie Sutton. Would that work?
And we'll, we will decide where the location is.
Yes, yes.
I will make that motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, so that was Ryan and Decker on the tree motion. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Carries, great. I will pass that on. They will be extremely happy, as will we, because it's a tree we get to replace.
Right, regarding the trees in the park, you, I, Kenny, and Kevin need to get together and.
Yep, we just need to find a time to talk through that. Kenny, what's the latest on when the county can come up and help with a couple, take a couple of trees?
I mean, I, I just suggest that we either wait till dry weather or we get a good hard freeze so we don't tear up the park and.
Right, right, that's what, and I know Kevin wants, Kevin uh, expressed he wants to make sure it's done prior by May, is what he's, that's what he's, that's what he's been.
Which is, which is fine, I mean, you know, you've gotta remember, we gotta get the equipment out there.
No, especially, especially depending what trees we s- we decide we're going, because you know, the ones you and I looked at already are closer to the road on Everglade. But the, the ones in the back of Saint Mark's Church, that's a pretty good stretch to get to there.
So, so alls I gotta do is just, um, when we're ready, you know, get a couple of weeks' advance, I just gotta email the country, the county and his boss. And you're just gonna do a shared services, we're gonna do a couple of weeks.
Right, we just need to put it in, in email or something they want, that's all they said when I talked.
Do they need us to approve a shared services agreement?
No, Rick said, no, just, he needs, he just needs something from Kenny formally just saying that, you know, requesting their assistance and they would provide it, no problem.
If you need that from, anything from me, just ask. Alright. Alright, great. Um, I had someone approach me who is trying to get rid of some used projector screens. These are motorized ones, the kind I sent you guys the, the, the model number, it's Dave Cameron over at the school. Um, they would, in my mind, would be great to replace the dry erase board, which is super shiny, and also have a projector screen mounted in the um, courtroom. For when we have meetings there, cause right now I just throw a projector on a various wall and move on. Eventually, I'd love to see a projector mounted in some of these rooms, especially this room, because um, I know the guys like to get together and watch the weather on the screen, I'm just kidding. But for meetings, it would be so much easier and so much more flexibility than having to be connected six feet from a projector, cause it's really frustrating. So if it's alright with you guys, um, I'd like to purchase the two used screens for a hundred fifty dollars total, for the two of them. Um, any concerns, thoughts, questions?
I make the motion, we authorize, you can go ahead and spend the money.
We could have a fundraiser, have that Super Bowl party down there.
Alright, looking for a motion? Oh, you have the motion.
To spend a hundred and fifty bucks, yes.
Ryan, and second, I need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Deb. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? Carries, thank you. Alright, anything else on the board?
Rob, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah, Marie.
Um, I'm still awake, believe it or not.
Woo!
I didn't get on to the beginning for the resolution for the um, municipalities. Did you put that through? Who offered it and seconded?
Yep. I have that. It was um. Uh, it was Bobby Ryan who offered it, alter, trustee alter seconded. All of us were yays and Megan was absent.
Okay, sure. Alright, very good.
What's that?
Thank you.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry. And, and Dan Shuddig recused himself. Recusal, thank you. Um, we did approve the veggies thing, did, did you get that?
I did, I, I was right about that.
Okay.
About, yeah, took me a few minutes, they kicked me off my phone first and then my computer, I had to come all the way back in, so.
Oh, good. Thank you for joining us on such a riveting evening.
Oh, it was very good, I stayed awake.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
Good night, Marie.
Thanks, Marie.
Looking for a motion to move into executive session for, for sort of discussing, I forget what, personnel with no other business after, all that stuff. Uh, I got a motion from Deb, need a second to move into executive? Need a second for executive? Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed or abstentions? Alright, we're officially moving into executive session at eight forty-one P M. No business after, thank you.